Good evening. We will call to order the meeting of the Edina City Planning Commission for March 28, 2012. Jackie, would you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Here. I note for the record, for those keeping attendance, that we're all here tonight. First item of business is the approval of the agenda. You all received the agenda in your packet. Are there any additions to the agenda? Any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is approved. The next thing should be the approval of the minutes of the last meeting. Is there a motion or comment on the minutes of the meeting of March 14?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Staunton.
I just wanted a brief comment on the minutes. In her usual capable way, Jackie has gathered much of the conversation that took place, but I want to, especially with respect to the sketch plan discussion that we had with the buyer-lease site, encourage anyone who is watching this or who reads these minutes talking about those minutes, that I think the reviewing the tape of the full discussion that we had on that will give a better flavor than the minutes. There was a lot of back and forth. I think what was really valuable about that discussion was that it was a conversation and we were focusing on various pieces and we were getting feedback from the applicants as well as giving feedback. And so, for anybody who wants more depth on that, I'd encourage them to review the tape.
Thank you. Other comments about the minutes? Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes with those comments.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Thank you, Kevin. The next item is the, this is our annual meeting, and we will be conducting election of officers. We have a secretary, a vice secretary, a vice chair, and a chair to elect, and also an item on the adoption of bylaws. And I would ask Commissioner Carpenter if he would make a few remarks about the bylaws and how we're going to handle that issue.
In the packets you have, I think, a set of marked-up bylaws that were created by city staff with changes that are redlined reflecting some additions beyond what we've normally had in the bylaws. I've been in the process of going through that and am close to having a revised draft done. What I would suggest is people take a look at what's in your packets right now. I think a lot of it will probably be what's in the final. And come the next meeting, I expect that there will be a complete draft, if not prior to that, circulated.
Thank you. So, we will consider the bylaws at the next meeting, if that is okay with everybody. Commissioner Staunton?
I just wanted to ask, is this a change in the code that's driving a change for all of the commissions, or is this specific to the planning commission, or can you shed any light on that?
No, I think the city staff is trying to have all of the commissions and boards have a set of bylaws, and they've kind of, they've prepared a standard template. We were first out of the block with our bylaws, and the template doesn't exactly meet the needs of the commissions since we do do quasi-judicial matters on this commission. So, we've kind of got a hybrid of what we originally had, plus the additions from the city, and that's the genesis of the need for an amendment to the bylaws. So, and I thank Commissioner Carpenter for taking that task on. I appreciate it very much. So, we'll handle the bylaws at the next meeting. So, let's move on to election of officers. Current officers are, the secretary is Commissioner Carpenter, the vice chair is Commissioner Staunton, and I am your chair. I think we should handle those in that order. So, I will open the floor for nominations for the position of secretary. Don't be bashful.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Staunton?
I nominate Commissioner Carpenter.
Commissioner Carpenter's been nominated. Are there other nominations? Are there other nominations? Are there other nominations? That's just standard procedure. Hearing none, I'll take a motion to close the nominations and elect Commissioner Carpenter as our secretary. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter, you are our secretary for the new term. The next office is the vice chair. Currently, Commissioner Staunton is vice chair. I will take nominations for the position of vice chair.
Mr. Chair, I would like to nominate Commissioner Staunton as vice chair.
Okay. Commissioner Staunton's been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations?
Where's the competition?
Hearing none, I'll take a motion to close the nominations and elect Commissioner Staunton as vice chair.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Commissioner Staunton, you are elected vice chair, and I would ask if you would mind handling the next position, since I am the chair and I don't want to handle that for myself.
I'd be happy to, Mr. Chair. So, the next position is, we need a nomination for the chair for the next year for the commission. Is there a nomination for chair?
Vice chair Staunton, I'd like to nominate Chair Grable to be chair.
So, there's a nomination of Chair Grable. Are there any other nominations?
Now's your chance.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations?
Can we ask Chair Grable to lead the roll?
Hearing no other nominations, I would take a motion to close the nominations and elect Chair Grable as the chair for the next year.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Congratulations, Chair Grable.
Thank you. I have a five-page acceptance speech ready to deliver, but in the interest of time, I'll...
Chair Grable?
Commissioner Fisher?
I just, you know, I think it'd be worth explaining to people who just watched that happen, that we have a two-year term limit, or two-year term limit for chair. So, it's not that, you know, we have a chair that we just vote in for 10 years or 20 years. Chair Grable's done a fantastic job. All of the officers have done a great job the last year. So, essentially, we're saying, hey, do it again for another year. And then, by our bylaws, we will actually make a change the following year.
Thank you for that. And I would also explain to people that all of the members of the commission serve, each term is three years, and we are limited by city council to three consecutive terms. So, it's not like we're on here for life or anything like that. We do rotate members of the commission, and it ensures that we get new ideas and new consideration of items for the commission. So, that's how that works. Approval of the consent agenda, we already approved the minutes of the meeting. The next item is community comment. During community comment, we invite residents to share new issues or concerns that have not been considered in the last 30 days, or which are not slated for future consideration. So, I will open up the floor to any community comment. It's not for items on tonight's agenda. It's not for items that we've heard in the last 30 days. Do any residents wish to address the commission on any topic? Yes, please come forward and give us your name and address.
David Allen, I live on Anderson Avenue. I don't know what has been addressed in the past, so how would, is this, what I have to speak on is, on this 94th building? Is this the time, or is it at a later time I should?
The which building?
The one on the, on 49th Street?
It's on the agenda tonight.
Okay. Would I be better off waiting until then, or?
Yes, we'll wait, we'll wait until that.
That's my question. I didn't know.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the commission? Seeing nobody, I will take a motion to close community comment.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is public hearings. And we have two items on the agenda, public hearing agenda. During public hearings, the committee's staff will make a presentation. And following that, the members of the commission will ask questions of staff. Following that, the applicant or the proposer of the particular item will be entitled to make a presentation. And then, following that, we will have an opportunity for the public to speak, or for the public input to be heard. With that, Carrie?
Thank you, Chair Grable. Members of the commission, our first item this evening is for a nine-foot rear yard setback variance for a home located at 5613 Browndale Avenue, located in the Country Club. It's an aerial shot of the home, located right here. What they would like to do is build an addition off the rear, the rear, into the rear yard above the existing garage that's located right here. The required setback from the rear property line is 25 feet. The existing garage has a 16-foot setback. It's non-conforming. This is a look at a survey of the property. This is the attached garage where the addition would be built above. This is a look at the existing home. So, you can see the garage here on the lower level. And what the applicant is proposing is extending this living space above the garage, and it's, it would be just over 400 square feet in size, so it doesn't meet that non-conforming provision in the code that we changed about a year ago. So, a variance is required. This is a look of what the, what the addition would look like, should it be approved this evening. So, in looking at the review in the three variance criteria, staff is supportive of this request. The hardship in this case is the existing location of the garage that's non-conforming. The request, staff believes is reasonable. It's a way to add square footage to the home without expanding the footprint of the house. It would, maintains the character of the neighborhood, the character of the home. The spacing between homes would not change. And because this is an addition off the rear of the home, it's not required to go before the Heritage Preservation Board for a certificate of appropriateness. So, with that, staff is recommending approval of the variance, as outlined in your staff report. And with that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you, Carrie. Are there questions of staff? Carrie, I have one question. Is this, does the fact that the height of the building at the, at the out, at the end is going to be increased, does that have any impact on the variance request at all?
It does not. That, that meets code.
Okay.
It's just that rear setback.
Other questions of staff? Thank you. With the proponent, care to discuss this issue, if they're in the room? Please come to one of the...
Here.
There, or there, either one.
I'm Jane Toney at 4613 Browndale Avenue.
And I'm Clifford Ted Toney at 4613 Browndale. We appreciate the opportunity to meet with you tonight.
It's my pleasure, Mr. Staunton.
We put together some packets, you know. The thing that's real important about this is, we want to stress, you know, we sent out letters to our neighbors that surround our house, and we got back, you know, letters expressing what a good project it is, how it would enhance the looks of our home, and how it would look, you know, overall for the overall neighborhood. So, I mean, we just feel very strongly, you know, with this type of a flat roof on our house, it's very difficult during the wintertime with the amount of snow that stacks up. You know, it leans against our house, it rots out our windows and stuff like that. It's very heavy, and from a health standpoint, you know, shoveling that over the side, you know, during some of these difficult winters, not this past, we've been fortunate and whatever. But, we just feel, you know, this is a project that would enhance our neighborhood, and it would definitely add, you know, some square footages to our home that our family could enjoy.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Toney. Any commission members have questions of the Tonys? Commissioner Fisher?
Do you still have an active basketball player in the family?
Just me and my girls.
You're relatively accurate.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I think we're good. Hopefully, we won't hit any windows.
All right. Don't shoot it high. That's all I'm saying.
Exactly. Exactly. But I just wanted to stress, the neighbors sent back wonderful letters stating that how much they would enjoy the project. It would make it look like a much more finished backyard. I mean, we've got these packets. If you'd like these, you know, we'd like to share these with you if you feel you need them. We got all the letters and everything you need.
Okay. Any other comments you'd like to make?
Well, I'll just say something. I'm a 50-year resident of Edina, and four of those years, or 50 of those, 50, sorry, I'm a 54 resident year, 54 years resident of Edina. 50 of those have been in the Country Club area. First on Arden Avenue, then on Moreland, and then moved a block away to Browndale. And I just am really, you know, concerned on how the area, homes, everything architecturally, everything looks. And to be honest with you, I really feel personally, and so did the neighbors, as you can see by the photograph, that it just looks more finished, going to the end of the garage. And, like I say, we didn't do anything to the side or above, and there is no difference in the footprint, which I think's a big deal. And I think our architect just did a fabulous job on designing the addition.
And it's a simple project, and it's not like we're going to have a lot of trucks. You know how neighbors get upset about trucks parked in the street. This is something that could be done in 45 days possibly, and whatever. So, it's very simple, and, you know, once again, if we sense the neighbors had a problem with it, then we say no. But, based on the letters that you're, if you're reviewing those, we've gotten some very positive comments. So, we just feel excited about hopefully moving forward on something like this.
Yeah. For instance, one says, "Good luck with the construction. The sketch makes sense. It's like it was meant to be finished off like that all along. Hope all goes well. Let us know if we can do anything." So, that was just an example of one of them.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this proposal? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Ask the commission, does the commission have any comments concerning this proposal? Mr. Fisher?
I think it's pretty straightforward. I think it's an improvement to the property. I don't see any negative aspects of it, and I don't have any questions, so.
Any other comments, questions from any of the commission members? Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that...
Commissioner Fisher?
My mic is not behaving. I'll move that we approve the variance request with all of the staff's recommendation.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any other discussion? It's been moved and seconded that the variance request be approved, subject to the findings contained in the staff report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion and variance is approved. There is a two-week waiting period when people can file objections or appeals, so I would wait for that period of time before you commence. But, given that, go forth and build. The next item is preliminary plat with variances 6120 Brookview Avenue for JMS Custom Homes. Carrie?
Thank you, Chair. Members of the commission, this property is being requested for subdivision with variances at 6120 Brookview Avenue. It's located on the east side of the city. It's just south of Pamela Park. Here's an aerial shot of the existing home, or the existing lot. There's an existing home located on the south side of the property. It's what it looks like today. The applicant is requesting to divide this 100-foot lot into two 50-foot wide lots. The request requires a subdivision that would create the two lots. Lot width variances for both the lots from 75 feet to 50 feet. Lot area variances from 9,000 square feet down to just under 6,700 square feet. And there's also a very minor lot depth variance for lot two. Primary issue to consider for the planning commission are the variance findings met. So, we'll go through each one individually. The, the first criteria, will the proposal relieve practical difficulties that prevent a reasonable use from complying with the ordinance? Staff believes that a reasonable use already exists on the property. There's a single-family home located there. It's similar to several oversized lots in the area. This graphic here shows that. This is the existing lot that we're looking at, at 6120. So, there are several lots to the north that exceed the 6,700 square feet. There are two directly to the east and two to the south. You may recall, this property here at 6109 was requested for subdivision about a month or so ago, and that was turned down by the city council. In terms of lot widths that are over 50 feet, those same lots all exceed the 50-foot. There are four 75-foot wide lots to the north. This is that 100-foot wide lot that was proposed for the subdivision that was turned down. There are two to the south that are 125 feet in width, and then two to the east that also exceed that. The second criteria, are there circumstances that are unique to the property and not common to every similarly zoned property, and that are not self-created? Again, there are several oversized lots in the neighborhood. And also, the actions requested are actually caused by the applicant. It's self-created. In requesting the variance, the hardship is self-created. Again, there's existing reasonable use with the single-family home that exists on the lot. And the last criteria, will the variance alter the essential character of the neighborhood? Staff doesn't believe that it would. There are several 50-foot wide lots in the neighborhood, so it wouldn't essentially be out of character. With that, staff does not believe that the variance criteria is met, and therefore recommending denial, subject to the findings that are outlined in the staff report. If the planning commission is inclined to approve this, the applicant has had several neighborhood meetings with area residents, and are willing to put some conditions on any approval, in regard to a smaller house, maybe not quite as tall, with some expanded setbacks. I will, I'll let the applicant go through some of those things as part of, as part of their presentation. But with that, staff is recommending denial. And I can stand for questions, if you'd like.
Thank you, Carrie. Questions for staff? Mr. Platter?
Hey, Carrie, I'm just, I'm just asking this question. So, the lots south of there, they're 125 feet wide right now. There would not be a variance required to subdivide those, right?
They, they would require variances. They would need at least 150 feet of width.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Okay. I was thinking something different. So, that would still fall underneath that piece. Gotcha. Okay.
They could potentially put, excuse me, if you put those two lots together, you could get three lots out of them.
Maybe that's, okay. Gotcha.
Other questions of staff? Just so I understand, there are three criteria for the granting of a variance, and staff believes that two of the three are not met. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Other questions of staff? Thank you, Carrie. Mr. Shane Wetter, would you care to have a presentation made, or someone on your behalf? Please come to the podium and give us your name.
Good evening, members of the planning commission. My name is Steve Bona. I'm with JMS Custom Homes. I'm the vice president of land and development for our company. I've been with JMS for just a few months here, but I've been in the industry for about 13 years doing land development and residential properties. So, as you can imagine, over the last few months, I've, I've been engaged with this project. I've learned a lot about the history of it, spoke with numerous neighbors throughout, and I've gained a lot of knowledge on both sides of, of the issue. I understand it's very charged with people having positive reaction to it, and also people having negative reaction to subdivisions in general in the city of Edina. The subdivision that was proposed by Refined for 6109 Oak Lawn just recently, it's almost, our proposal is almost identical to that subdivision. Ours is 6120 Brookview. Their proposal, they did have neighbors on both sides. They had supportive and supportive neighbors, and they also had neighbors, obviously, that were not in support of the project. At that time, they did have staff report, staff support of the project. It was obviously approved by the planning commission, and city council ultimately denied it on a 3 to 2 vote. But many of the comments that, that were made during the planning commission and city council meetings, I have been able to incorporate into our project, and we're hoping for a different outcome tonight, not from the planning commission, but ultimately, as we push this forward. So, I'm just going to speak about kind of the steps that I've taken with the neighborhood and with the plan, so you can see where we are at with it, and what the differences are. So, on February 29th, we met with, we had a neighborhood meeting. We sent out 75 letters to residents in the area. We had about six households that attended the meeting. And at this meeting, we presented a specific house plan for them to comment on. It was our first shot at, at getting feedback and looking for comments that we could then refine potentially later. This is the house plan that was presented at the neighborhood meeting. The reason that we presented this house was that, this house is much smaller than the existing home that we currently have on the lot at this, at this address. It is more in character because of the size. This house is about, this house is about 28 feet wide versus the existing home that was pretty much maximized for width. It was about 40 feet wide. The height of this home is about 26 and a half feet tall. The existing home that was previously built is about 32 and a half feet tall. And the side setbacks of this home, because it is narrow, ended up being 14.8 feet on one side and 7 feet on the other side. The existing home was about 5 feet on each side. So, this home ends up with a square footage of about 2,600 total square feet, and the existing home on site was about 3,000 square feet. So, we present... So we presented it to the neighborhood because it was smaller, because we thought it would fit in better, and addressed some of the concerns that we knew that they already had. So we generally received good feedback from, I'm gonna go. We generally, generally received good feedback from the neighbors. We received lots of comments on how to improve it, what could be done to maybe make it better, and, and also positive comments about what it was and the setbacks itself. That was a big issue. So after this meeting, my concern was to contact all of the neighbors that I could possibly get ahold of over the phone. So I started contacting everyone in the immediate area around this lot that I thought would be interested in, in hearing about this and, and offering suggestions. So I was able to get ahold of 12 different households and had conversations with each of them. That resulted in four different meetings that I had with separate homeowners, and went into detail about what, what they suggested or what their comments were on the house and the subdivision. So in general, the feedback was, was limited to a few different items. Some of them were landscaping, increased landscaping, doing something special so the streetscape looks real nice. A smaller home than, especially than the existing home that is there, something that would fit in with the neighborhood. Sunlight, especially to the property to the north, so we're not blocking sun from the house. Setbacks, of course. Height of the house, privacy of the house, of the houses that surround this, this new house to be built. And exterior house details and window placement, and that was kind of a privacy issue. So we began modifying the plans after we received this feedback. We had our architect working on it. We directed our architect to take all those comments into account and see what they could come up with. I also contacted a landscape architect, and I gave them the directive. This landscape architect had a lot of experience in the city of Edina. Gave them the directive to design a plan that'll be welcomed in the city, and that will include the specific plantings even that people had suggested. So some of the neighbors were suggesting, you know, they wanted these kind of trees, or they needed something for screening, or whatnot. So we had the landscape architect, we gave them that directive, and, and then also privacy and screening. Those were some of the big points that we wanted them to complete. So this is, this is the exterior front elevation of the new plan that the architects came up with. We thought it looked very, very nice. They added a decorative garage door. They made it a little bit more craftsman style than the more modern look that it had previously. And in general, we are very happy with the look of this house. The, the lot survey of the house actually shows some of the setbacks that I was discussing previously. So our existing home is to the, is to the south, and to the north is an existing neighbor's home. And we pushed this house as far to the south as, as we thought was necessary to provide a nice setback between the house to the north. And, and you can see how much wider that house is to the south. So we're thinking that that will work pretty well. This is the final landscape plan that was provided by the landscape architect. They did add the trees that were requested of some of the neighbors. We added our breviaries to the north side of the house for screening, a whole row of them. We added some extensive landscaping in front of the house, up to the front door. And then on, going back to this plan, we actually added two more trees to the front yard of the existing home that is there now. And that was also by comment of the neighbors. So we have two in the front yard of the existing home. We added two more trees to the front yard of the proposed home. This was then sent out to the neighbors, this exact plan. They had not seen the color rendering of the new house plan, but they had seen the, the actual plans of the house we were proposing. So then the concern was, well, what if, what if this is not the house that a buyer wants? What is going to be built then? So we needed to come up with some restrictions that the neighbors, that would satisfy some of the neighbors that had commented about it, on restricting ourselves with what we would build in case a buyer came along and said they wanted their own custom house, and it wasn't gonna be this one. This house would be built by JMS if approved, as soon as the existing house actually sells. And we are hopeful that that will sell as soon as this issue is resolved related to the subdivision. And we believe that it will. So what, what we came up with was a width of a house that we're proposing to be no more than 32 feet wide. So keep in mind again, this is for a house, not this house here, but if a different house is built for a buyer that comes to JMS, we would maximize that width at 32 feet wide. Forty feet, approximately 40 feet is allowed under the code. In this case, a 29.8-foot front setback is allowed if you take the average between the two houses on either side. And this house, the new house could be built, and we would have the flexibility to push that house back an additional up to five feet if planning commissioner and neighbors thought that that would be a useful idea, and that would help the neighborhood. The height on, the height maximum according to the code is about 35 feet, and we are suggesting 29.5 feet to be the maximum that could be built under a pre-sold house. So those are the restrictions. Basically, it was the house width, the front setback, and the height maximum that we could set. We're also open to any suggestions that anyone has. These are all ideas that were basically came from the neighborhood themselves. So we followed up with the neighbors who gave direct input on the landscape plan and the architecture of the home, and we received great comments from them. They thought generally that it was, that it was good. Even the people that are opposing the subdivision, some of them did think that the house plan and the landscape plan looked nice. And some of the final plans were actually emailed, and I know the neighborhood is communicating, and some of the final plans were emailed to the neighbors, not by me, but they did that internally. So what this led to is, is the fact that we believe that the practical difficulty of this, as stated in the previous Oaklawn subdivision, is that this is a 100-foot wide lot that is unable to be used in the same way as the majority of the lots in the neighborhood. In this area, we did see the larger lots that were highlighted on the previous screen. But in this area, we have 50, 60, 70, even 80 lots. But out of those, out of those lots, depending on how big of an area you go to, only about five of them are actually 100 feet wide. Some of them are a little bit larger than 50, but not to the 100-foot mark. So a subdivision of a 100-foot lot is reasonable, since the resulting lots maintain the character and the consistency of the overall neighborhood. Similar subdivisions have recently been approved nearby on Oaklawn and Brookview. Now, we understand that these don't set precedent, but they do fit with the approvals that were given on those projects. Five of the 100-foot lots in the neighborhood are unique to the majority of the lots here, and this is a 50-foot lot neighborhood in the city of Edina. The city's code, we believe that the city's code with its possibility for variances does not automatically approve or deny the specific application. That is why we are all here. We think the code is a good guide, and ultimately, it needs to be decided whether or not the overall character of the neighborhood will stay intact. I have added the conditions to our application, which will better allow the subdivision to fit with the character of the neighborhood. So we're going with a smaller house plan, a smaller house plan that, with the restricted dimensions, a landscape plan that provides additional screening, privacy, and better street appeal. And we're open to any other suggestions that you may have. We did receive a number of letters of support for this project, and we do have them. So we know the neighborhood is divided. We don't expect necessarily that our supporters will speak in public. It's a very strong issue, but we wanted to make you aware of that. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Bona. Are there questions of the commission for the applicant? Mr. Staunton?
Thanks for the presentation, Mr. Bona. The existing house that's there on the south side, when was that built?
It's about two years old.
Okay. And when that was built, was that, was that your company that built that?
Yes, it was.
Okay. And you didn't have the, why, I guess what I'm wondering is, why didn't you seek a subdivision at that time?
I think the best answer to that question is that if we can go back and redo some of the, remake some of the decisions that were made at that time, now looking back, that probably would have been a good idea. But now, today, I'm speaking about what we have and, and where we're at with the project. So we do have the house there. We're seeking the approval of the subdivision now, and, and we're doing whatever we possibly can to help out with the subdivision and make it appealing for the neighbors that live nearby.
Thank you.
Other questions of the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Bona.
Thank you.
We're now gonna open up the hearing to comments from the public, but I'm gonna preface that with a couple of things. This item is, we've had a lot of discussion here at the commission concerning subdivision, concerning this lot, and concerning subdivision of other lots in the neighborhood. Some of the comments and letters that we've received have been constructive. Some of the comments and letters we've received have been inappropriate in that they've attacked individuals involved with companies, and I'm not gonna allow the comments tonight to turn into another circus. What I propose to do is to read two letters. One, pretty much stating the position of the people opposed to the subdivision, and one, pretty much stating an opinion in favor of the subdivision. And once I read those, if people have new items to add, then I will be happy to entertain comments. But we're not just gonna rehash the same complaints over and over again. So the first letter is from, this one, this letter happens to be from Mr. Erhammer at 6101 Oakland, stating his opposition to the proposed lot division. And he says, "The city has a zoning ordinance subsection 850.07, sub 20B4A, which states, 'If a non-conforming lot or parcel is at any time since October 22nd, 1951, has been held in common ownership with all or part of an adjoining or abutting parcel or lot which together comply with or come close to complying with the minimum width depth area and lot width to perimeter ratio requirements of this section, then such non-conforming lot or parcel and such adjoining or abutting parcel or lot shall be considered as one lot and shall not be decreased in size below the minimum requirements. If in a group of two or more adjoining or abutting lots or parcels owned or controlled by the same person, any single lot or parcel does not meet the full minimum depth width area or lot width to perimeter ratio requirements of this section, such single lot or parcels shall not be considered as a separate lot or parcel able to be conveyed and developed under this code. The city minimum lot width is 75 feet. This is a city of Edina zoning ordinance, and was established to protect this city from suffering from the crowding of properties much like that which exists in many residential areas of Minneapolis. Basically, exceptionally large homes on very small lots. I cannot tell you why the city originally allowed or plotted 50-foot lots, but they apparently realized that they were not suitable to build upon very early in the development of this city. The only thing that has changed in any way since establishment of the 75-foot lot width requirement is that very little developable land exists in Edina anymore. Developers and a portion of the public want these subdivisions to pass. Not good for the city or neighborhood, but for financial gain. Not for the good of the city or the neighborhood, but for financial gain. This area, Fairfax of Edina, is one of the most affordable neighborhoods in Edina to buy into. Thus, it has become a target area for developers, who generally are in a position and have the relationships to buy modestly priced homes off the market before the general public. They then follow it up by trying to have their way with the city regarding its established rules and regulations. And if they don't get what they want the first time, they just keep coming back, asking for it again and again. This is a waste of your and the council's time, along with tax dollars. Finish this, stand your ground, and end this with those who pursue these subdivisions. Those of us who live in this neighborhood have no issue with the size of the existing homes. If we had, we would not have bought into it or moved on to large homes in different areas that have the character and space to carry them. We chose to live here for the green space, yards, and in many cases, even for the size of the existing homes. Now people just want in, and they want their big homes regardless of the existing aesthetics of a given area. I understand these desires, but cannot support them. Neither the developers nor those who do support them care about the effect of these subdivisions or huge homes have on a neighborhood. They just want it, or the money, and the hell with anyone else. As to the hardships that JMS may face on this property and their request for a subdivision as a result of them, you should all know the story well. They did it to themselves, and Edina shouldn't fix it for them. Say no to this subdivision this time and every time one is requested. And then another letter. "We are Doug and Jenny Nelson, the homeowners at 6117 Oaklawn Avenue. Our backyard is adjacent to the vacant lot subdivision at 6120 Brookview. We are here today to express our approval for this subdivision of the lot located at 6120 Brookview, and express our disappointment for the denial of the subdivision of the lot located at 6109 Oaklawn. We live in the section of Edina near Pamela Park, where the overwhelming majority of the lots are 50 feet wide. We do not understand why the subdivisions of double lots to 50-foot lots should not and were not immediately approved in keeping with the neighborhood. 75-foot lots that meet current city code were not developed in the Pamela Park neighborhood in the 1950s. The failure to subdivide the previously mentioned lots has left us with vacant unkempt lots and two vacant homes. There are old wood piles, weeds, uncut grass, untrimmed trees, stakes, plastic, and general junk left behind. We would have preferred to have two new families, new homes and homeowners, who will take pride in their new homes and property. We need the revitalization that is taking place in other neighborhoods within Edina to be scaled to the economic structure of our area. 50-foot lots are the most economically feasible for this area. The 50-foot lot values are approximately $150,000 to $200,000. The double lots, 100 feet, here, value at approximately $300,000. When a finished house at the customary three to four times lot value, and the result on a double lot is a home valued at nearly $1 million. A $1 million house is too expensive for our neighborhood, and not likely to be built by a prospective buyer in the Pamela Park area. The lots could continue to remain vacant. We need 50-foot lots to become available for new construction, be it tear-down of older homes or subdivision. Simply put, 50-foot lots fit nicely in with the rest of the neighborhood. What has changed? Why are the subdivisions being denied? Subdivision is reasonable for our neighborhood. If the lots are not allowed to subdivide to 50-foot lots," lots are not allowed to subdivide to fifty-foot lots, what is Edina's alternative plan for redevelopment of the vacated one-hundred-foot double lots? What is the plan for those, of those opposing the subdivision into fifty-foot lots? Last week, we received a newsletter in the mail from Jane Paulus, a longtime real estate agent in Edina. The article is entitled, "The Big House Coming Into a Neighborhood," that we feel is well-written and makes some very relevant points about redevelopment and revitalization. The key points that are applicable are, one, the neighborhood is desired for its location, so the investment is worth it for the new owner. Present people living on the block should feel good about this and feel this means their house value is good. Two, change means the community is alive and well, and someone else values this worth and wants to be part of it. Three, the past does not fit into the game plan of today. If housing stock cannot be created to meet the needs of today's buyers, the, per our neighborhood, will not flourish, and these families will seek other neighborhoods, both in and out of Edina. The older, smaller houses do not necessarily lose value. They are still needed by communities as their size fits the needs of a family that is not in need of space, such as the home we own and have remodeled for our empty nester lifestyle. We hope others like us in the neighborhood will remodel and upgrade because they see revitalization and improvement in the neighborhood. If the houses do not keep pace with the needs of people today, the neighborhood will be put out to pasture. Please approve the subdivision of sixty-one twenty Brookside to a fifty-foot lot in a neighborhood that is fifty-foot lots. Take the time to drive through our neighborhood. Bring us new families, revitalization, and updated housing options for today's family, not seeking the one-million-dollar home, but still seeking to build a new home in Edina. Sincerely." So, those are the two letters, one for, one against. And then, we will now hear public comment that's different or new than what's been said already.
As a point of order, both of these letters are in the record, and we receive them in our packets. And I'm concerned because at a public hearing, we're supposed to come with our, as undecided, we're supposed to listen to all public comment. And although it would be, it's, I think it's great to request that people not hammer home points that have already been made, I think that anybody in the public who wants to make those points should be allowed to do so.
Any other comments before we hear comments from the public? Okay, we'll now open the, Mr. Commissioner?
Respectfully, I concur with the commissioner's comments.
Okay. We will hear comments from the public.
Hello again.
Name and address, please.
David Valentine at five oh two four Hankerson Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Valentine.
It's not why I'm here, but this is timely for me because I have a house from this company going in right next door to me. And we're on a, a smaller neighborhood with smaller houses. I am worried about those houses, but I was more worried before the house that was there, the existing farmhouse, was removed. I think that this is going to benefit me in the long run. I'm not happy about it, but I told one of the neighbors, I wish it was my house. So, it's going to benefit me. I am still concerned about what's, what else is going to happen to the neighborhood, like my house and my neighborhood because of this, but it's certainly going to move it up.
Thank you, Mr. Valentine. Ms. Weston?
Good evening. Janie Weston, sixty-one thirty-six Brookview Avenue. Thank you for letting everybody know I have a freedom of speech and I can give my opinion. You read the letter. It was in your packet. Gives a very, not full, not everything, but a pretty good idea, blow-by-blow, history of this lot. I'm extremely disappointed that in the applicant narrative that's in your packet from the planning department, there are some things in here that are just not correct, such as that the home on the parcel was constructed in the nineteen fifties and renovated in two thousand eight. And the prior owner, that is not correct. The previous home was built in nineteen fifty-six. That was removed, and the nineteen fifty-six era homeowner did not remove their house. JMS had that removed by outing house movers. As you all know, I am very much against subdivision of this lot. We all know what city code is. If you don't know after reading all our letters, well, I don't know how to get it into your heads better. Two large, oversized wrongs, and I mean large compared to everything else in our area, do not make a right. The first house is oversized. How everything has been proceeding as far as how that house got there, in the position it's sitting in, has been wrong. We do not need two, and we don't want this. The precedence, if you allow this subdivision, is very dangerous because that's been JMS's modus operandi all along. I'm going to try to do everything I can to skirt the city as far as how to get a subdivision. He's trying to force one here. This is not right. Absolutely not right. If you allow this, he can do this with the next lot. That's not right. The solution is, and this would leave all parties, I think, as well satisfied as we're ever going to get, move the existing house to the center of the lot. If JMS refuses to do so, then the city can buy this. And don't say, oh, the city doesn't do this. City of Minnetaka has been buying homes to remove because they are impeding on the natural landscape of Minnehaha Creek. They either move them or have them torn down. City of Edina can purchase this home, hire outing house movers, move it, then put it back on the market. The city loses virtually no money. It sure beats another lawsuit. JMS gets some money. The neighbors are satisfied, and that's a solution that would work. I don't want to see this going on any longer. And JMS's letter to notify us of this meeting wasn't even within proper code for how a letter is supposed to go out to the neighbors. It didn't even say the date of this meeting. He's trying to skirt everything as much as possible, again.
Is, is the neighborhood interested in buying this house?
A few years ago, we were interested in purchasing the house that got torn down. JMS moved on it before we even found out that he'd already sold it. My husband and I were advised to, don't go there because we would be sued. That's exactly what he said. Don't even approach the homeowner, or JMS will sue you.
Okay. What, let's, let's keep the discussion here tonight to this subdivision proposal and not what's going on in the past with respect to this house. The house that's there is legally there, okay?
Mm-hmm.
So, let's talk about whether or not it should be subdivided now.
It's there in a position that is not within city code, that the city allowed. There's city responsibility here.
The city allowed that, so it's within the law for it to be there.
And the city did not want to.
Well...
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
Mr. Staunton?
Ms. Weston, thanks for your input. I'm curious, given the setup now, the way the building's situated, I know you've, you've kind of suggested the solution of moving it on the side. But suppose it doesn't get moved, how, how are you going to feel about the neighborhood with it configured as is? If there's no subdivision, then there would be that space between that house and the next house. Can you just give us your reaction to how that's?
What to do with the other half?
Well, just how you're going to feel about it as somebody who lives in the neighborhood? How does that impact your neighborhood? If it stays the way it is now?
If, if I lived in that house, if the neighbors weren't unhappy with me living in that house because they don't like the position of it, what I would do with the north half, I would put in a nice big vegetable garden because that's exactly what my husband and I have done with where we are now. We purchased our neighboring lot. We, our, the lot that our home sits on was below city code of only sixty feet wide. We purchased the sixty-five-foot lot next door, which made, and we combined the two, to make it a conforming with the code size lot. And I've got a great vegetable garden. Really yummy stuff.
Okay.
And we enjoy our garden very much.
Thank you.
Other questions, Ms. Weston? Thank you very much.
Okay.
Other comments from the public?
My name is Jenny Williams Nelson. I was the author of this letter that you read, so thank you for reading my letter. I just, I guess I just want to, to say that we are very much, there are many of us who are very much in favor of the subdivision. As you saw by the map that went up, the lot is fifty, the neighborhood is fifty-foot lots. We live, our backyard backs up to this vacant lot, and the subdivision that was denied two houses away from us. We now have very messy vacant lots. We really would like new homes, new families, and children on, in a neighborhood of fifty-foot lots. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Either one.
My name is Mickey Turk, and I live at sixty-one forty-one Brookview Avenue. I don't think I'm wrong in saying that everybody but perhaps one person on the entire block, both sides of the street, are opposed to the subdivision. The calls that came in from Mr. Bono, most of us said, no, we want the house moved to the middle. No, we don't want to talk about it. We don't want the subdivision. It, this is a unique block. I believe the block in back is unique, too, for a couple of reasons. Fifty-foot lots mean small houses. When, I don't want to hammer this, but when JMS's house came in, it materially changed the neighborhood. People who own two hundred and two hundred fifty thousand and a hundred seventy-five thousand dollar homes are now inside a neighborhood. Originally, the house was selling for nine hundred thousand, and with respect to the last person making comments, she didn't want million-dollar homes. Well, that's what's coming, and we will be driven out, and our prices go down. Because if somebody wants to purchase two lots, and you look to the future and you think, oh, my God, in two years, it's going to go down, down. I mean, this is all, you know, you, you get this little deal right now, but you, you, you're like, you're, you're like starving. You're, you're fighting for breath, thinking, when is a good time? This is a bad economy, but is this the best time I could sell my house? So, people live here. People have kids. People are living in our block and the block beyond on Oaklawn because it's affordable. Other people who can afford bigger houses don't want to be in our block unless the majority of the houses are big. Because, I mean, that makes sense, right? You're going to feel odd. That's why the JMS house has not sold. Not because it's an eyesore, but it's too expensive. It doesn't fall into the character of somebody who wants a big house, let's say, a half a mile down the road or on the west side of Edina or in country club. It, it is a kind of an eyesore, but, you know, a few trees, a few shrubs, a kid's playground, you know, playground equipment to show that it's, you know, enlivened, would really, really help that empty lot. You know, we also want the house moved to the middle. And if people can fight over and over again for a subdivision that had been denied previous to this house being built, it was denied, we can come up and ask for the house to be moved to the middle. I mean, you know, everybody has a concern, but we materially live on this block. We know everybody. We talk to each other, you know, we, we depend on each other. And it's just, you know, it's hurt us, and it's, it could destroy us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turk.
Good evening. I'm Trudy Langren. We live at sixty-one oh four Brookview. I, I probably can give some longevity because my husband and I are now the oldest residents home-wise, not age-wise, but homeownership. We, we purchased our home...
We will note that for the record.
We purchased our home in nineteen seventy-six, when I was twenty-five and he was twenty-nine, and we were starting a family. And we were told by the realtors who showed us our home, and then the other realtor who showed us the corner home, that Dan lives in now the sixty-one oh one Oaklawn, which was the letter that you read, that the ordinance had been changed, and it was now seventy-five-feet lots. And so, our neighborhood would be very diverse because we had this odd grouping of odd-sized lots. And we liked that idea. We love our neighborhood. And so, we personally have nothing against the building of it. What we are concerned is the ideology that, and the reason we fought the sixty-one oh nine Oaklawn was because the house that was proposed was going to be as large as a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home, which would automatically have, had run off on our lot, which is six feet lower because we're on a hill. That's why we fought it. We are not fighting modest homes. It's an ideology thing. A suburb needs multiple-priced homes. We need two-teacher-salary homes. Two teachers could not buy a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home. I don't think with our professions that we have been a disservice to Edina. We have been good residents for thirty-six years, okay? And we have modest professions. So, that's what my concern is. We need to keep affordable housing, moderate-priced housing, so that incoming professionals like teachers could live here. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Staunton?
Ms. Langren, I just wanted to ask the same question that I asked of Ms. Weston about, if this were to stay the way it is, and so you'd have this kind of extra-big-side-yard, if you will, how to, what are your thoughts about what that does to the character of the block that you're...
Actually, I love yard, large-sized yards. I envy that gorgeous, large yard. It needs nice grass. It would be a beautiful lot if the grass on the other half of that lot was matching the grass that was on the existing house, okay? I guess there's just too long of a history on that. We begged to not have, I'm kind of a tree hugger. I'm from the sixties. We begged to not have those oak trees cut down. And so, now, I have nothing against the house there. It's a beautiful house, but it's an ideology that we have to make a political statement as residents of this suburb that we need the moderate-priced houses. We just need to, everybody needs to have a voice. And I think we're pricing out incoming professionals with having seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar houses. And that is what was proposed at the sixty-one oh nine Oaklawn, and that's why we fought it. We can't afford houses like that in our neighborhood for the people who need to come in to keep a suburb vibrant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Langren, don't you believe that if, if we maintain one-hundred-foot lots, that more expensive homes have to be put on the one-hundred-foot lots because one-hundred-foot lots are more expensive than fifty-foot lots? That was the point that Ms. Nelson was making.
I, I, I understand your point, and I respect your point, but that's not how this argument started. This argument started with a nine-hundred-thousand-dollar house being put up and then subdivision being asked for. So, it kind of put us into a camp, those of us in the, in the neighborhood that have been there forever, who dearly love our neighborhood.
But the proposal I heard tonight was to build a small house on that small lot.
That was the first I had heard of it. I was invited to the evening get-together, and my husband and I did go, and we had a wonderful... wonderful conversation with Mr. Schoenwetter. We just decided to ideologically agree to disagree. It has morphed into such a large issue now that I don't feel if I'm qualified to say anything more about now that smaller house, because that was not the house we saw when we met, okay?
Other comments from the public?
Hi, I'm Carol Carmichael, 6112 Brookview. I stand north of the proposed subdivision, and I had a long letter, but a lot of the information has already been talked about. I guess for me, with the new proposed information that Mr. Bono has supplied, the promises, et cetera, the concern that I have is that history might repeat itself, and we would end up with a house that wasn't what was promised, that isn't set back the way it was promised. So, there's history there. And for me, I, that's really the basis of everything for me, is that I'm afraid that we wouldn't get the house that's promised, and that's why I'm not agreeing with the subdivision. So, that's the long and the short of it.
Ms. Carmichael, let me ask, if the house was as promised, if conditions were put on the subdivision request that required the house to be built as presented this evening, what would your opinion be?
It would still be after the fact. It's pretty, it's pretty hard to fight a house that cement, it's already been cemented in the ground. It's pretty hard to fight that kind of a setback. And how do we know that that wouldn't happen again? And then it's too late. I have trust issues with this builder. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Carmichael.
I do realize-
Better get the other microphone.
I do realize that there may be some trust issues with some of the neighbors, and I may not have made it clear before, but I had sent, earlier today, I'd sent Carrie, Ms. Teague, all of the information I shared today. So, we are suggesting that you approve this subdivision with the conditions that I had sent in earlier, which were what I presented. So, there is the new house design. If that house design is not put up, then we have restricted ourselves to the front setback, the side setbacks, and the height of the house. And we're open for other suggestions if, if there are any. And the landscaping, the landscape plan as well. All of it is included in what we are proposing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bono. Anyone else wish to address the commission on this issue? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing and bring the matter up to the commission. Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll say this, that having looked at the drawings of the, how these properties have been platted in that area of town, and I know there are differing points of view on this, but it does seem to me that very substantially, although there are exceptions, that it is a 50-foot-wide lot neighborhood and has always, probably largely always been that. But as it relates to this particular issue, I know that one of the things that are contained in the, in the materials provided by city staff is that, that in this particular case, the variance that's being requested is one that is occasioned by the simple fact that they're asking for a subdivision to begin with. And although it's almost a footnote in the state statute and the city ordinance, the idea of getting a variance that's self-created is one that I don't think the ordinance of the statute provide any leeway on. So, on that basis, my sense is, unless there's somebody else here that can persuade me otherwise, is that we don't really have the discretion here to grant a variance if we were so inclined, because the, the request for the variance is essentially occasioned by the fact that the subdivision is being requested by the, by the proponent.
Commissioner Fisher?
Chair Grabel, I'd like to, and Commissioner Carpenter, I'd like to follow up on that, and I don't know if you can answer the question, or Carrie, or any one of our other smart commissioners here, but this is what I'm struggling with, is the comment that you just made, that it's a self-created hardship, in a sense? That's basically what you're saying. I'm still struggling with how it's, how is this more self-created than the one at 6109 that we approved, say, a month or so ago? And I'm trying, I was going to ask Mr. Teague, in your staff report, if I recall back on the 6109, your staff report was generally positive. And maybe, maybe the question is, could you articulate how this is different? Because I'm just struggling with that, that piece of it.
I'll give it a shot, because the staff recommendation was for approval on that. I think the distinction between this block on Brookview as opposed to Oaklawn is there are more oversized homes and oversized lots on this block. I think a stronger case could be made that the character of this particular block is that mixture. There's about as many oversized lots as there are undersized lots. Over on Oaklawn, that one 100-foot-wide lot was essentially the only 100-foot-wide lot on that block within the 6100 block. There were a couple of oversized lots on the 60, 600 block, but I think that's the distinction that could be made between Brookview and Oaklawn.
If I could just follow up again, maybe it's back to Commissioner Carpenter, do you, what part of this are you seeing as self-created, in a sense? Is it because they've already built a home in a position where it's built? Or is it, or is there something else you're seeing that sort of creates that situation?
Yeah, I view the self-creation simply by, as a result of the fact that the action they're taking, which is to seek a subdivision, the variance wouldn't be necessary but for the fact that they're asking for a subdivision. By asking for the subdivision, they're essentially creating the need for the variance, and therefore it becomes self-created.
And I, that's what I thought I was hearing you-
And I know where you're going to go with this-
Yeah.
Because if you want me to try to explain why now and not before, I honestly can't tell you that. I don't, I think in retrospect, if I were looking at what we did previously, I probably would have voted differently.
Okay, and that's fair enough. I'm just, I always struggle with this very issue on these subdivisions, because of course the act of asking for a variance is an action, and therefore, so you bought a lot at any point, and the fact that you're asking to subdivide it is self-created. You know, it's your initiative you're taking to say, "This could be two lots, just like the lots around me."
But, but- And if I could-
Go ahead.
If I could, just to add to that, this is, this is not a situation where somebody acquired a piece of property not, not realizing the dimensions and not knowing that it would be necessary to do something of this nature, or at least, or to at least know that it was a risk. So, I, you know, I think that this is a situation where-
Okay, I mean, that makes sense to me.
But why, why wasn't the variance that we just approved on the house in Country Club, where they wanted to extend the house out over the garage, by the same logic, that was a self-created variance, because they asked for a variance so they could build that extension?
Well, they asked for the variance, but if by asking for the variance was, would be a definition for self-creation, then virtually every variance would be denied.
Exactly, my point exactly.
I know. In this particular case, the reason why I think it's self-created and why I think it's different than that is that they, they've acquired a piece of property, they had, it had certain dimensions to it, that, that the subdivision of which, if it was necessary to do, if they chose to do it, would be necessary, this is kind of circular, but by choosing, by choosing to do it under circumstances where they didn't, they have other choices. They could just build on the lot the way it is, but they want to, they want to subdivide it into two lots. But by doing that, that, that creates a request that's different, in my judgment, it's different than simply requesting a variance in and of itself. It's the, the need for the variance is not, is not the same, in my opinion, under the first scenario, and under the scenario that I'm talking about, I think it's, I think that situation creates the circumstance that gives rise to a self-created, essentially a self-created request.
With respect, I disagree with your logic-
That's okay.
Because I think it would apply to the variance that we just granted earlier. I buy a house, and I want to put an addition on it, and I need a variance because my addition won't fit, and therefore, it's a self-created variance. That seems to me to be your argument.
But I would argue that the contrary to that is that if, if that's the case, then, then every request is self-created, and by virtue of that, then the statute, statutory provision provides for it is irrelevant.
I agree. Commissioner Forrest, and then Commissioner Staunton.
Well, the Browndale variance, there was an external practical difficulty that was identified in the staff report, and I presume we were agreeing to that when we voted in favor of it, that because we did say that the approval was subject to the staff recommendations, and that was the fact that they had a partial flat roof over the garage that led to water problems and whatever else was said in there. So, that was an external practical difficulty. It wasn't, and that's at least what I based it on, and when I questioned it myself, you know, is it, I mean, to what, what do we have to rise to? Well, it's not undue hardship now, it's practical difficulty, and that's what we came up with, so.
Commissioner Staunton?
Couple of things. Talking first about this, we have a, we have a three-part test for the practical difficulties we've got. Is the, is the use reasonable? Is there something unique about the property, the unique circumstance that is not self-inflicted? And then, is the, is the proposal consistent with the character of the area? To me, it seems like the use is reasonable. I mean, it's a single-family house, and so, having a single-family house in this area is reasonable. I am more troubled by the second factor and the third factor. And I have been, on the 6109, I voted in favor of that, and I voted in favor of the one on Oaklawn and the one further north on Brookview. But in my mind, there's pretty significant differences relating to those last two factors about all of those situations. First of all, with respect to Oaklawn, there's, I think it's 21 single-family lots on that street, and the only one that is 100-foot lot is 6109. So, in my view, the character of that neighborhood is clearly 50-foot lots. The same is true on the Oaklawn one, further north on 5920 or so. To a lesser extent, but also true, is that the character of that 5,800 block of Brookview also had, for the most part, 50-foot lots. They had some oversized lots, but none of them could have been, only one other one could have been subdivided. They had two 75-foot lots, an 80-foot lot, and a 100-foot lot, other than the one that we granted the variance on. So, I think this one is different in the fact that you've got, you know, you've got five lots, one of which is next door, two of which are across the street, that are not 50-foot lots. So, I think it makes a big difference in the character of this area compared to the other area. You know, if you even did the math on, on the average lot width, if you take that, that 59, I'm sorry, that 6,100 block of Oaklawn, the average lot width is 52.38 feet, and on the same block of Brookview, it's 68.3 feet. So, it's, it's got larger lots in that area. On the, on the self-inflicted discussion, I see the, the practical difficulty that we're wrestling with here is the fact that we've got this empty lot, this empty 50-foot lot, and that the hardship that they're claiming is, "Look, we've got this empty lot, we should be able to fill it in." I think it's a big difference between this case and the other cases, that every one of the other cases came to us before they built on the lot. Here, they bought the lot, they knew it was a 100-foot lot, instead of seeking a subdivision at the time to figure out whether they could build two houses or one house, they built one house and hoped to be able to muscle us into granting the variance later by leaving an orphan lot. I think that is the ultimate self-creation, and I think that's, that makes it entirely different from Mr. Porter, who came in here before he had built anything, and said, "I want to make this into two lots," and every single other lot on the street is a 50-foot lot. So, I'm pretty uncomfortable granting this variance for those reasons. I think it's, I think the character of this block is different than the character of the other blocks because of the other lots, and I think that any, any problem that's created has been self-inflicted.
Other comments from the commission? Commissioner Schroder?
Mr. Chair, I wanted just to agree with Commissioner Staunton, that the character of the neighborhood, I actually look beyond just the block itself, and I think the character of this neighborhood is not defined solely by 50-foot lots, and I guess I take exception to staff comments in Section C of the standards about altering the essential character of the neighborhood. I think the essential character of this neighborhood is variable lot sizes, and to eliminate one lot that's larger changes the, the variable qualities of the lots in this neighborhood. And I think it's the same thing that we saw on several of the others. When we start kind of piecemealing them down, we are changing the character of the neighborhood from being lots of variable sizes to lots of all 50 feet. It may have originally been platted as 50-foot lots, but I don't think the essential character of the neighborhood was defined by a plat on paper. I think the essential character of the neighborhood evolved as owners came in, built houses, bought lots next door, and established homes and landscapes on variable-sized lots. And I also would contend, maybe a bit contrary to what Commissioner Staunton says, I don't think we have an empty 50-foot lot here. I think we have an extraordinarily wide side yard to a lot that exists today.
Let me just play devil's advocate for here, for a second, and ask Commissioner Schroder and Commissioner Staunton. Then, are you going to take the same logic and allow someone to come in and buy two adjoining houses and combine those two lots into one to build a bigger house? Because the same logic would have to apply.
Can I ask staff a question first? If, if someone's coming in and buying two lots, is there a process they go through to actually join those lots and make them, and would it be obligated to allow them to join those two lots?
There is a process. It's a simple form that's filled out in our assessing department to combine those lots, so it becomes one lot, and they could simply tear those two homes down and build one, one larger home. It would just be a building permit. So, a two-step process, filling out that lot combination, and then they could go directly to a building permit.
It would never come here.
That's correct. It wouldn't come before planning commissioner council.
And, Mr. Chair, I guess what I would say is that, you know, our code permits that. What our code doesn't permit, and the reason it's in front of us as a variance, is our code says 75-foot lots. Now, we've granted variances in the past, and Commissioner Schroder and I may have voted differently on those, but in my view, the difference here, you know, as I've described, is both the character is different on this block and, and this self-inflicted hardship.
The code provides for 75-foot lots, but the code also provides for variances. So, 75 feet is not cast in concrete. Mr. Platter?
I just had a comment by that same logic. Going back to when this was developed, there was a character in that neighborhood at the time, let's say it was all- was a character in that neighborhood at the time, let's say it was all 50-foot, and over time, people bought, put some together, pulled some apart, but what you're saying now is that can never change, I think is what I'm hearing you're saying, that that character is established and nothing can change within that. Is that what I'm understanding? I'm trying to follow that.
I think that defining the essential character of the neighborhood is not so simple as saying it's based on 50-foot lots, and I started by saying that the character was not defined when it was platted originally with 50-foot lots. I think what's happening is this neighborhood, like other neighborhoods in Edina, is evolving. The question here is what's the eventual lot size? I think the essential character of the neighborhood, of every neighborhood in Edina, is changing, not just by virtue of lot size, house types, but by the people who live there. There's a whole host of things that are changing the essential character of the neighborhood. If we look at the essential character as kind of on a continuum, we're in the midst of some kind of evolution here, so I think we can't rely on it just being 50 feet or 100 feet or what was originally platted. I think it's an evolving thing.
Just to let everybody know what my thinking is, that we are going to have a motion on this issue tonight, and we are going to vote it up or down, and we're not going to leave, it's unfair to the neighborhood and it's unfair to the developer not to take any action, so just keep that in mind. Other comments? Commissioner Scher.
I don't support this request. I'll start out with that statement. I haven't supported most of these requests. I'm personally a bit hung up on the fact that I think neighbors and citizens should be able to rely on our decades-old portions of the code, and that includes now the 75-foot lot size. You know, to buy a home sometime in the 60s and then suddenly find out 30 years later that we're not going to respect something that's been in the code that long and that I might have thought governed lots around me, I think is a bit onerous for citizens in general. I think we ought not to do that. That being said, I do believe in situational reviews of every request for a variance, and you know, as a result, also don't feel that precedent is set. You know, all this discussion about what did we do on the last five times we talked about this is kind of immaterial to me. I like to look at each situation when we're looking at these for a variance concern. In the area of this particular lot, there are several lots that are not 50 feet wide. Having an oversized lot in this area of Brookview is not unique in any way to me. It doesn't meet any of the tests that I would apply for granting a variance in this particular case, given those beliefs that I've just stated. So I think the applicant really fails to meet the test of a non-applicant-created hardship, and I would concur with some of, I think, Commissioner Carpenter's first comments regarding how we would apply that standard. So I simply, I can't support it, and that's actually fairly consistent with the way I voted on most of these other instances.
Can we have a motion? Commissioner Forrest?
I think it's kind of interesting that what we saw largely was a focus on neighborhood character and the plans of the house from the applicant, and I think it's kind of a cute house that was presented, but going back to the variance process, as it's been outlined for us in statute, we're to go through the evaluation of those factors, and in addition to that, as part of that, is that granting the variance isn't going to put us in conflict with our comp plan and things like that. And I think it's kind of interesting, the section of code that was quoted in the letter that Chair Grable quoted, that 850.07 is in a different part of our zoning code than the numbers are, and so it really hasn't been part of our discussion before. But that section of the code speaks to intent, and it says, you know, that any lot that's smaller than 50 feet, I mean, or to divide anything into a lot that's smaller than 75 feet shall not be allowed. And so in my opinion, if this is something we want to start allowing, then I think it's, you know, people should lobby the city council and see about changing the code, and allow people to come forward and speak on that matter, if this is what we want to allow in our community. If we think that the 75-foot requirement is outdated, well, then let's change it. I mean, our code can evolve as well, but right now, it's beyond just the numbers. There's a statement of intent there, that this is what we want, and I think it's pretty clear that we do not want, you know, less than 75-foot lots. Whether or not that's our preference, or whether or not that's what's already there, and I don't think that's necessarily completely logical, but I think it's pretty strong wording. The plans of the house aren't part of the variance process, and even though the staff report did not find that the variance would alter the essential character of the neighborhood, that's kind of what was spoken to largely by the applicant. We aren't supposed to use precedent as the guide. Also, sorry to do this, but you referred to our code, you know, the code is a good guide. Well, the code is the code, and basically, that's why there has to be a process to go outside the code. And we need to go through the evaluation based not on our personal preferences, but on the factors that are put before us to go down that checklist. I guess I would say also that those aren't vacant lots, they're unoccupied homes, and the state of the lots have to do with whoever currently owns the lot. It's not because they're wide lots. And I think a lot of this other stuff has been spoken to. I think it's important that we follow through with the process and the evaluation that's set out in state statute, and if we want to change the process, if we want to change the whole approach to these smaller lots and recognize that they can be part of these neighborhoods, or maybe we want to encourage that for in-building, and these are all comments that we've made in the past, that maybe we want to encourage infill development, maybe we want to encourage this, well, then there's a way to do it, and that may be through the code, but not through the variance process, because I agree with Commissioner Carpenter, this would be a self-imposed difficulty, that it doesn't matter how I would feel about the house itself or whether or not there should be smaller lots, I don't think it meets the criteria for a variance.
Commissioner Staunton?
Mr. Chair, I want to make a couple of things clear. I mean, I think some of us up here are agreeing with each other, but we don't necessarily agree with why we agree with each other, which is, if you can follow that.
I don't know. I agree with that.
Which is a guess not to be made. So I want to preface what I'm going to say by kind of restating my feeling that there are times when variances are appropriate, and that's why we hear these cases. And you have to look at each situation, but I don't think that we should be kind of hard and fast saying, you know, we're never going to vary from the code, because there's going to be circumstances that come up that are going to warrant a variance. I would also say, and we've had this discussion in past cases that have come before us, you know, the fact that a house is built too big on a 50-foot lot after it's subdivided is no different than a house being built too big on a 50-foot lot that was that way for years and years. It can happen either way, it's really not about the subdivision. And I'm also not sympathetic to neighbors who are worried about their sunlight getting cut off when they're on a 50-foot lot in a 50-foot neighborhood. I see this as a different situation, as I've stated, than the other ones that come in front of us, so I don't regret my votes on the other ones, and in fact, I'm just as supportive of them now as I was then. But I would make a motion to deny this variance application based on the following findings. One, that there is not a circumstance that's unique to this property in the sense of the 100-foot lot, because there are several other 100-foot or larger lots in the neighborhood. Two, to the extent the unique circumstance is the fact that there is a house way over on one side of the lot that creates the impression of an orphan lot, whether it is or not, to the extent that is a unique circumstance, that's a self-inflicted, self-created, unique circumstance. And then three, that although I think that the use is reasonable, the proposed use is reasonable, it's a single-family house, I don't think it's consistent with the essential character of the neighborhood as you look at that block and you look at the other lots that are on that block. So based on that, I would move denial of the variance.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to deny the request for the variance, the subdivision and the variance based on the three factors that Commissioner Staunton mentioned. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Fisher.
Chair Grable, this one's been tough for me. I've pretty much, you know, voted yes for at least the last four subdivision requests that I can recall, and I also don't regret any of those. I think, you know, we deliberated a lot on them, and we looked at statutes, all the types of discussions we had tonight. After reading through the entire packet and coming in tonight, I really didn't know how I was going to vote. I think I've changed my mind three times so far, but something that Commissioner Staunton said finally cinched it for me, and it's why I was asking those questions earlier. I'm really struggling with the, or was struggling with the practical difficulty being self-created or not, and to me, that's the difference here, and it's the difference in the other ones we've looked at, in the sense that literally this applicant came and did work on this site, knowing full well what the rules are and what the difficulties were with the site. So in a sense, they truly did self-create the difficulty, and to me, that's different than what we've looked at in the past. I will say that the Nelsons in their letter articulated exactly how I feel in general about these subdivisions, that I think in the long run, the neighborhoods are going to be better off being able to subdivide lots in those situations. I think we'll get more, call it affordable housing, more scaled housing that's scaled to the neighborhood. But I also agree that on this particular block especially, it's not as uniform as we all, you know, talk about. This is a, there's a lot of variety on this block, and for those reasons, I will also be voting no.
I'm going to vote against this motion. I favor the subdivision of this lot for many of the reasons that Ms. Nelson said, for one of the reasons that Mr. Schroder said, Commissioner Schroder, we are in a period of evolution in the city of Edina, and I think the neighborhood is wrong to suspect that this neighborhood is going to ever stay the same. What will happen over the next 10 to 15 years is that the smaller houses will become older and older, and unless redevelopment and rejuvenation comes into the neighborhood, your values will decrease. If we allow people to come in, like Mr. Shane Wetter and other developers who want to build reasonable homes on small lots, everybody's housing values will go up. Now, I do agree, and I'm angry with Mr. Shane Wetter for causing this situation in the first place, there's a lot of angst in the neighborhood and anger in the neighborhood, and I would suggest that that anger is misplaced and should not be part of this process, and frankly, you got to get over it. Having said that, the next thing that's going to happen in this neighborhood are people are going to come in and they're going to buy two houses and they're going to start building the $1 million homes in your neighborhood that you all want to be avoid, and you're going to have to live with that, because you're not going to allow developers to come in, like Mr. Shane Wetter, and build the smaller houses on the smaller lots. And it just does not make sense. The idea that this is self-created is circular logic, it applies to every variance request. If I come in and request a variance, I have therefore created the self-created need to have a variance, and it just, that logic doesn't hold. This thing ought to be done, it's going to be better for the neighborhood if it's done, it's a good proposal, and I think it's too bad that it's going to be denied, but I'm going to vote against the motion. Other comments? Okay, motion's been made and seconded to deny the variance request. All in favor of denying the variance, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye. The motion carries. The variance is denied. Thank you all for your participation in this matter. The next item for business reports and recommendations, a sketch plan for senior housing at 5109 5125 West 49th Street for Hunt Associates. Carrie?
Before you is another sketch plan review. This property is located at 5109 through 5125 West 49th Street. It's located just north of the Grand View area, east of the Holiday Gas Station, along the railroad tracks and Vernon Avenue. This is a look at the three properties in question. There's an existing single-family home and two apartment buildings. The apartments contain four and five units. This is a look at the single-family home and then the two apartments. The property is Zone PRD 2, which allows residential buildings up to six units. Well, this isn't a very good graphic, but the site is guided low-density attached residential in our comprehensive plan, and the applicant is proposing to tear down those three structures and build a new six-story, 98-unit apartment. They would be requesting a PUD rezoning to accommodate this, the request. This is a look at the site plan. They would provide a pedestrian connection from the neighborhood along the west property line that would connect up to Vernon, another pedestrian connection located right here. As we do with all PUDs, we take a look at the underlying zoning, the most comparative. So in this case, they're proposing senior housing, and so we would take a look at our PSR 4 standards. And as indicated in the table in your staff report, there would be a number of sections of the code that are not met. Setbacks on all four sides would not be met. This would be a 60-foot tall building, so that establishes the setback requirement, so both the front rear and the two sides would be short. Code also has a requirement for setbacks from R1 zoning districts, and it's based on the height of the building, so in this case, a 280-foot setback would be required. The proposal would be just 20 feet on the east, there's an adjacent single-family home to the east, and 100 feet to the north, there are single-family homes located across the street on 49th to the north. This site is guided in our comprehensive plan, and also the height standards for the site would be four stories and 48 feet. The proposal for six stories and 60 feet would require a comprehensive plan amendment, as would the change from that low-density attached residential to high-density. The lot coverage or building coverage would be 52 percent, code allows in the PSR 4 district a 35 percent. And also in regard to the density, we have a formula that needs to be run to determine the number of dwelling units that can be accommodated on the site. Running that calculation, 44 units per acre would be allowed here. The density proposed is 71 units, so quite a bit over. The comprehensive plan suggests high-density residential up to 30 units an acre. Just to give you a comparison of some of our other high-density residential developments in town, our two most densely developed properties are the Continental and the Durham on York. Those are at 45 and 46 units per acre. Comparatively, most recently, the Waters and the York, addition to the senior housing there, those were 22 and 36 units per acre. So the density proposed here is quite a bit larger than what we've seen in Edina. The other concern or issue that staff would have, and this would come out as part of a traffic study... a traffic study, would be the traffic generated coming out of this neighborhood. There's only the one connection up to Interlochen. So, a full traffic study would be required to flush out some of those issues a little more. So, with that, that's essentially the project. I can stand for any questions, or the applicant could come up and make their presentation.
Okay. I would remind the audience that this is a sketch plan review. It's an opportunity for a, I do have a question for you, Carrie, in a second. It's an opportunity for a developer to come before the planning commission and propose an idea, receive input, and comment, and perhaps revise the idea, perhaps drop the idea, perhaps move forward with the idea. So, that's the purpose of a sketch plan. It's not an official public hearing kind of meeting. In the past, we have allowed some limited public comment, however, just to get additional comments and ideas. Carrie, I do have a question. I recall several years ago that we approved some kind of development on this lot, and apparently, it never went through. And do you recall what that was?
Yes. It was a little bit before my time, but you are correct. There was a project that was approved. It did not include the two apartment buildings here. It was the single-family home located here, and there was, I believe there was a portion of the right-of-way here that was vacated and went to this property here. So, it was this property right here. There was, I believe it was a six- or seven-unit townhome that was approved to be constructed there, but it was never built. But that was approved by the council.
Okay. Other questions of staff? Oh, Commissioner Forrest, excuse me.
Yeah, we have a comparison there, back in here, to the city standard of PSR 4, but that's more related to the proposed use rather than its current zoning, which is PRD 2. So, in looking at this, in PRD 2, I guess it's more like, if we're going from here to there, what's our starting point? In PRD 2, the building height is limited to two stories and 30 feet versus four stories or 48 feet, and then on up to what's being proposed. And I'm just wondering if there are any other major differences between those two that the PRD 2 and the PSR 4 that we could, we should be aware of as far as, as we evaluate what changes might be happening to the property?
Yeah, the most significant is, within that zoning district, buildings cannot exceed more than six units in the building, so that's probably the most significant standard.
Setbacks and lot properties.
Setbacks are going to be based on height.
Right. Thanks.
Okay. Would the proponent, the applicant, please come forward and present some comments and thoughts?
Chair, Commissioner, my name is Daniel Hunt on the, this mic?
That, that mic.
I am the president of Hunt Associates. We are the proposed developer of the site. We're excited to be here. We think we've come up with a use for the site that serves a great purpose in the city of Edina. There's a demand for senior housing. There's not enough of it. There's not enough that is new, that has a lot of amenities people would want. But we're not naive. We know we have a lot of work to do with the neighbors. We can't overcome all their concerns, but I think we can overcome a lot of them, and I believe we can add something to a very nice neighborhood to make it nicer. So, we look forward to your comments and questions, and I will let the architect introduce the project.
Chair Grabel, Commissioners, my name is David Motzenbecker with BKV Group. I'm here to walk through any of the plans with you that you got in your packets and explain a little bit behind, our idea behind this piece. Looking at the zoning, as that question came up first, one of the key pieces that we were looking at when we were looking at the PSR 4 that staff had recommended, was looking at that and then looking at some of the allowances that were available under that category, and seeing how that got us close to what we were proposing. We were looking at the 500-square-foot spot for enclosed parking, the 250-unit subtraction for proximity to Highway 100, as well as the 1,000-square-foot unit subtraction for senior units. Taking all those into consideration, getting us into a required lot area space of about 577 square feet a unit, which gives us about 94 units for that spot. We're proposing 98, so a little bit different. We're looking at a six-story, 60-foot building. One of the things that we looked at in depth when we were looking at this was the Grand View Small Area Plan, and I did outline some of those in the submission that hopefully you received. Looking at the density that is desired to be right across the street, the smart streets, the complete streets ideas that are brought forth in that plan, and what you're proposing for Vernon Avenue, we think that by bookending that whole corridor with some high-density housing is the key to completing this plan. The plan shows a lot of high-density towards the bottom of that area, as well as some new medium-density housing in the center, and almost lining up directly. And I'm not sure if I can have access to the overhead. I can show that on here.
The PDF?
Yeah, the PDF, yeah. At the top, obviously, you're aware. Down the middle are all the proposed new residential, again with some of the higher density down towards this end. We think the proposed senior housing at this end, at the density we're proposing, really works with the proposed redevelopment with the Grand View Small Area Plan. We think that the complete streets idea along this space could extend. Right now, it's kind of stopping at this intersection by the gas station. We think it could extend almost all the way here, because right now, it's difficult to get from that space, from that neighborhood, to this side of the highway and across the street itself, across Vernon. So, by adding a connection from the neighborhood, we're proposing, part of this is to create a long walkway, steps, all the way up from the neighborhood to Vernon, to that connection. Also, we're going to rebuild and keep a lot of the existing trees along Vernon, but rebuilding a boulevard there and a sidewalk there to connect back towards this side of the highway as well. I'm not going to run over all the guiding principle in the plan, because I've written those out for you, and I know you have probably read over those, but we felt that with those guiding principles of turning barriers into opportunities and layering development over supporting infrastructure, that was a key one that we think this is doing. And so, we want to create an opportunity out of the barrier that's Vernon and connect this new senior housing space to the Grand View heights realm. I will walk you through a little bit of the design here. In the center, we have almost a 5,000, 5,500-square-foot terrace. That's the entrance to the building, with some terracing up from 49th Street to get folks in. We have separate parking entries, one on the right, one on the left. They each go to their own separate floors. They are not connected inside the building. We are buffering that with extensive landscaping and fencing on either side. We are trying to keep as many of the existing trees and shrubs that are adjacent to Vernon as possible, and introducing new pathways through that space, connecting over and across, and connecting over through the middle. Here's the pathway I was describing that comes all the way up from 49th Street and then connects to the intersection here. This would also fall into the plan with the bicycle connections, some of these pieces here, bringing people up from the neighborhood and over to this proposed bicycle connection. Here's a three-dimensional look at the space. This is the walkway up to Vernon, the garage entries here and here, and the terrace. This is a look of the building from Vernon, facing east, and then facing west. I'm happy to stand for any questions, clarifications on this project. We're here to hear your thoughts and to get your feedback, and hopefully help shape this project so it can move forward.
Mr. Motzen, it's Motzenbecker, right?
Yes, sir.
Two questions. One, as alluded, I have friends that live down Brookview, and when I go there and I come back to go home, it's very difficult, most of the time, to get out onto Interlochen. What are your suggestions on how to alleviate that issue?
That was something that came up when we had our open house here in the foyer a few weeks ago, and we did have some of the neighbors in, and the traffic issues were a concern that was brought up. As staff said, looking at a traffic study for this, obviously, we'll look at doing that and see what that report brings forth. Some of the suggestions that were made were some that were interesting, some that we were curious to maybe partner with the city on. There was a question about ice in the wintertime, coming down that hill and being able to make that turn. People were going off into another direction. We'd be happy to work with the neighborhood and the city in coming up with design ideas that might help that intersection. We are proposing a connection along this, adding a sidewalk and a boulevard along 49th as well to connect to our walkway and possibly to get up to this space. As far as cars, I think we'd have to wait to see what the traffic study brought back, and then that would give us a little bit better opportunity to study solutions.
And then, the second question that I have, this is, this is senior housing, 55 and older. Is it assisted living? Is it, what is the scope of the project? And would you talk a little bit to the need for that kind of housing in the city?
I may ask Mr. Hunt to come back and clarify some of this if I get it incorrectly, but I believe it's 65, 62, and older housing, and it is not assisted living. It is individual apartments for able-bodied seniors. And so, one of the things that we feel and that we've heard, both from staff and to some of the open houses that we're getting, was there's a desire for residents to stay in the city that they've grown up in and have lifecycle housing. So, be able to downsize from a house as their kids grow up and move out, and they have too much house, and they would like a smaller place, but they would like to stay within the city boundaries, and they would like to be able to access amenities and features that they can walk to or be close by. And so, we see that that need can be met by what we are proposing here, by having a concentrated space of residential that is right adjacent to a newly proposed master plan that's going to bring forth amenities, restaurants, grocery stores, things like that, that they can walk to, as well as parks. We think that that need is very strong, and we would love to be able to meet that with this development.
And as long as I'm asking, what would you suppose the market value of these places would be?
Are you inquiring to what the rents would be?
Is this going to be rental or owned?
Rental, yes.
It's rental?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, the average unit will be about 1,000 square feet, and the rents will probably be north of $2 per square foot. So, the average rent will probably be $2,000 to $2,100 a month.
Other questions by the Commission? Commissioner Staunton?
So, one of the questions that, we're relatively new with our planned unit development ordinance, and we've had a few through, and we're trying to, and many of them have come through at this sketch plan level, and so, we're trying to kind of find our way. So, one of the things that's become a concern for me, as people have come through on the PUD, is that there are some who come through and they seem to, they seem to see it as an excuse to just not comply with the code at all. So, my question for you is, quite simply, what's in it for us if we're going to give you all of these exceptions to what is happening?
Chair Grabel, Commissioner Staunton, thank you for the question. I think that one of the key pieces that we wanted to bring back to this space was connection, connection that is not currently there and that we think is a positive. So, connection to the other areas of Edina via some of the pathways that we're including in our proposal. So, the pathway along the western property line that brings neighborhood residents up into the stoplight, we think is a large amenity that is not present currently. You have to go all the way around, as the chair was alluding to. We also think adding the walkway back and enhancing the green space along Vernon, which is now that exit from the highway, will help bring, actually, positively reduce air pollution, adding trees back, adding green space back, keeping the existing trees that are there, adding a walkway and a boulevard, more green, with the possibility, again, of working with the city, if the complete streets idea is something that Edina wants to continue to support and move towards, we would be interested in looking at what we could do on our side of Vernon to move towards that complete streets idea as well.
Could you clarify, because the information, what you said and what's in the packet says 577 square feet per unit, and Mr. Hunt said 1,000 square feet, so I'm just kind of wondering which is it that we're talking about?
Chair Grabel, Commissioner Forrest, the 577 square feet is the density bonus that we could achieve with some of those allowances that we are hoping to get.
Commissioner Schroeder?
I'm not so interested in the numbers. I just want to know how you justify the transition from a small-scale, single-family neighborhood to the north, to a really tall building directly across a pretty narrow neighborhood-based street? How do you rationalize that from an urban design perspective? I know how you rationalize it going towards Grand View. What about the rest of the way going to the north?
Chair Grabel, Commissioner Schroeder, thank you for that question. We think that with this density, we have set the building back far enough that it is transitioning, and given enough positive front yard amenities, that it will help contribute to the positive street envelope in this area. The building as it stands is set back 55 feet from the back of curb. It's set back 120 feet from the fronts, even farther, I'm sorry, 120 feet to the closest residence across the street, and then another 12 feet farther back from the others. So, quite a large distance, and that is only to the front wings of where the parking enters into the building. The next face of the building set back is approximately another 60 feet back, so almost 200 feet that building is set back from the residence across the street. So, the shadowing, which we still haven't got final shadow studies yet, but we'll bring those to you as we move forward, because we're still finalizing some of the building. And again, with your comments tonight, we may be finalizing some other options and looking at some things. But... But with that shadow study, with the building setback, as well as the advantage that we haven't talked about yet, which is the topography of the site. This site has twenty-two feet of fall on the west side and nine feet, I'm sorry, on the west side and nine feet on the east side. So, it is tucked back into the hill quite extensively, so the hill absorbs a lot of the height, a lot of that sixty feet that we're talking about.
Go ahead.
I'm curious if you explored any other solutions. And this is a sketch plan. I'm assuming there was some exploration that happened. Do you explore anything other than looking at this just in Plan View, a monolithic solution to providing senior housing on this site? Would anything that would break it down so that there would be something of a smaller scale near Forty-Ninth and maybe something of a different scale as you approach Vernon?
Chair Grabel, Commissioner Schroder, we hadn't at this time, but that is something that we can certainly explore if that's the commission's wishes.
Following up on one of Commissioner Schroder's questions as to the height, if you are standing on Vernon at the point where the ramp from one hundred comes on to Vernon and you look to the north, what's, if I'm six feet tall, how much taller is the building going to be at that point?
On the Vernon corner, the height of the building, I may ask my colleague for that height.
Do you understand what I'm asking?
Yep.
It's four stories, forty-five feet.
Forty-five feet at that corner.
It'd be forty-five feet, it's forty-five feet above to the level of Vernon.
At grade.
The grade at Vernon, okay.
One other comment, my name is Jack Foreman with BKV Group. Another comment to Commissioner Schroder's question, we are stepping the building here on the west wing as a part of trying to step the building down towards Forty-Ninth. We definitely could look at doing more stepping over on the east wing, and I, is that more kind of where you were headed to decrease the height as you went towards Forty-Ninth?
I didn't actually see that as being stepping, but maybe in concept, stepping down towards Forty-Ninth would be an advantage as you try and transition to smaller, single-family homes on the north side of Forty-Ninth. I don't think the stepping of one level, as I see it here in the image in front of us, is accomplishing kind of the transition that I was imagining.
Right, right. I was looking for the concept, not necessarily, do we have the magnitude yet, right, but okay.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you, Chair. I'll mirror just real quickly a comment by Mr. Schroder with respect to the size and mass of the building. I, too, was concerned about how large that looks relative to a neighborhood that's literally across the street, and the fact that, you know, the distances are what you're saying they are, I think probably helps a little bit, but that would be one of the bigger concerns that I have in terms of how that would fit in that area. It just seems like a very large structure being shoved into a very tiny little glove, but I'm willing to be persuaded otherwise. And what's the, how large is the underground parking in terms of number of spaces that you're anticipating you'd be able to cover, and what's the ratio versus the number of units?
All the parking spaces will be enclosed inside a hundred and thirty-two spaces.
A hundred and thirty-two, and I'm sorry, what's?
And ninety-eight units total.
Ninety-eight units. So, it's one and a half or something like that? And then in terms of the, I was just kind of curious, it's tucked in, the way it's tucked in so close to the exit off of Highway Hundred from onto Vernon, I'm curious where the setback, not the setbacks, where the easement right-of-ways are relative to the position of the building. Is it, I'm guessing it must be far enough away that it's not an issue, but I'm just asking.
And we're still, the easement for the railroad is close right in this.
Right, that's on the other side.
Area here. The highway, I would have to double-check the state highway easements, but we can double-check that.
Commissioner Potts?
Commissioner Carpenter, I think in our Grand View plan, we actually contemplate eliminating that ramp or pulling it back so that might not be such a problem, which I kind of like that configuration, whether the easement exists. You know, leave it to applicants to figure that out. A couple of comments on this, I think, you know, per Kerry's assessment here, relative to city standards, this is a very aggressive boost in density, and typically, I support increased density. This causes me some concern on a couple of fronts, and I'll get to those points, but first, I want to say what I like about this is the attention you paid to Vernon, responding to what we've been developing at Grand View, I think is good, and also responding to the green streets, all on that side of it, as some of the other commissioners have stated. Two major concerns, one, picking up on Commissioner Schroder's comments about the Forty-Ninth Street side. I think the suggestion to start to step that down to, that would, and to cut back on some of the unit count, and frankly, would address density issues, height issues, setback, and pay, I think, appropriate attention to the residential neighborhood to the north. That needs another hard look. And then also, the traffic concerns me a lot. I think if you're northbound on Brookview, the left-hand turn onto Forty-Ninth is very difficult, and as you leave this site, not only the left onto Interlochen, but the left out of Forty-Ninth is going to be tough. So, again, cautionary notes about going for that much dwelling unit density.
Commissioner Plateter?
Yeah, I won't comment on the step down because I think that's been pretty well addressed, but I would agree with the comments thus far. The other comments I have are on circulation on the site. So, with this being a senior housing, I'm assuming there's going to be a lot of drop-offs and a lot of visitor parking and vans showing up. How is that accounted for here? How does, what does that do with Forty-Ninth Street? You know, where do visitors park? What happens with all that additional circulation beyond what's just for the people that live here?
Chair Grabel, Commissioner Plateter, the visitor parking is included in the hundred and thirty-two spots inside. We'll be setting aside a percentage for visitor parking, so visitors will be able to come in and park and access the building from that space. If there are drop-offs, we envision, that's one of the reasons we were, if, let me see if I have a larger plan here, one of the reasons we are envisioning kind of the drop-off at the curb and this walkway into the plaza. So, there is an existing walkway at that point right now. These two trees are also existing. We wanted to pay a little homage to that and keep that central walkway and the trees, so we're thinking the drop-off would be here.
You know, just with that street, you know, I think you really need to consider some kind of curb cut there with, otherwise, if you don't do that, you have people sitting on the street that's not that wide of a street for a drop-off, so some type of.
Like a bump-in?
Yeah, something there.
To, like a drop-off lane or something?
And again, I think you're going to have to deal with buses that show up, you know, Metro Mobility or whatever's going on with those of how that access is, and I don't know if you're going to make it so they can drive in the lower level. I don't know what your clearance heights are, but you know, maybe that's something to consider as well to get that right inside right away versus cluttering up the street area.
Contrary to what some people think, I'm not a height-phobic person, but it's, I am concerned in this situation because of the proximity to the residential, the R1 lots, and it looks like you're surrounded by R1 lots except for Vernon. And when I looked at the current height overlay district for that part of town, as a, is it three stories for the, just that general area across the street, Kerry? Yeah, he's going to check on that, but it is lower than the five or six as it currently stands, which of course would not apply if the PUD says otherwise, but it does speak somewhat to what the expectations are and what's currently considered appropriate for that part of town, not considering the R1 area. And the proximity, it looks like on the east side, you're about twenty-five feet from the closest house, the building. So, that's very, that's pretty chummy. I was, I know that we'd be defining this as a particular type of housing in the PUD. It would be senior housing, but we also need to consider use over time, the adaptability to a different use going forward, since it is a residential approach that you're taking. If the rental market drops or people want to buy, I mean, trends change, and there may be amendments to the PUD going forward. So, I guess I'd just like to say, unless you have any comments now, but that would be something to consider, is how this can be adapted in the future. I mean, apartments are usually needed, and I agree with some people here where I say I think we still tend to overpark things based on our current expectations. I'm not so concerned about that, but I do concur with Commissioner Plateter about the site circulation on that street. It would make a, the way the plan stands now, it looks like a really heavy impact potentially on that neighborhood, both with the building size and the traffic. Question, where would you have deliveries then? Would they go underground, or how would you do that, especially if you have larger vehicles dropping?
Commissioner Forrest, as, I think there would just be the standard garbage pickup as an apartment complex. There's not going to be a communal kitchen or dining room serving. Each unit will be its own piece, so we wouldn't anticipate deliveries of any kind of like food stuffs or those types of items, but you know, just a standard garbage delivery which would be picked up.
And that would have to be really carefully considered, too. It's location screening and things like that, being in an R1 neighborhood.
Commissioner Schroder?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to add on just a little more, because I'm intrigued by this site as being, you know, really transitional in nature between what we might anticipate happening in Grand View and perpetuation of the single-family neighborhood of the north. And it's not just an issue of how you transition height, it's how you transition in character, because if I look at the three-dimensional image that kind of looks down on this from Forty-Ninth, it's a very, it's not very neighborhood-like. In fact, the first-floor expression is either the wall of the plaza and the steps which brings you up one level to get into the building, or it's garage doors and kind of the base of the rest of the residential building. It doesn't really feel neighborhood-scaled residential. So, as you look at an evolution of design directions here, I think it would be really helpful for all of us to understand how this building actually addresses the kind of two different characters that it has to face. And while I'm intrigued by the character that I see along Vernon, it's a very, you mentioned in your narrative, the notion of a gateway-like feeling. It has some very dynamic qualities to it, but when you get around to the neighborhood side, we don't have anything that really feels neighborhood-scaled or neighborhood-character. I don't know how you deal with that, but I think if you were to come back here, I think I would appreciate, and others would as well, some exploration of the idea of taking not just the scale, but the character down to the neighborhood level, particularly for somebody who's walking along the street and looking at that first floor at eye level.
That's a great, great comment. Thank you.
Mr. Staunton?
Couple of things. First, on the density, there's been some discussion already on the density, but I just want to give you an idea of what the scale of what you're talking about here. I mean, you're talking about a tenfold increase in the density. You get ten dwelling units there now, and you're talking about going to ninety-eight. You compare that, Mr. Teague has this chart in here that has the units per acre for the rest. I mean, the highest one is forty-five or forty-six, and those are over in the Southdale area along York and along France. The only other one that's close to a residential neighborhood is the Waters, and there's a bunch of people up here who are still nursing wounds from that. And that's twenty-two, you're talking about three times the density of that, and it was eight hundred feet from there to the nearest, right? It was across an entire park. It was up against a freeway. It was next to a fire station. It was next to a, you know, medium-density townhome area. So, I think you're just, there's no way. I just don't, I don't want to have you walk away thinking, yeah, they felt pretty good about it, at least for me. I think the density is way out of bounds, and I don't see any way you're ever going to get anywhere near that density. The second thing I wanted to talk about is Grand View, because I've spent a little bit of time on Grand View over the last couple of years. And I got to say that this kind of density in this spot would doom the Grand View project. I mean, this is what people would be afraid of, is that we're going to bleed out into the neighborhoods, that we're going to totally exceed our envelope. I mean, one of the great things about Grand View is Vernon creates, Vernon and Eden create an envelope, and the topography of that site slopes down toward Eden. You have, you have OLG at the south side of that, you have the Grand View Square project at the south side of that, so you've got natural buffers to the single-family residential. And on this north side, I don't think it's fair to say that we're envisioning this kind of height or this kind of density across Vernon. So, I don't think that this is consistent with the Grand View framework, and I wouldn't want people to think that this is, you know, if this were the first thing out of the block on Grand View, I think we'd get a lot of people saying, what, you know, what were you thinking about? So, I just think it's way out of scale, and I, I mean, I like the notion of some residential, I like the notion of some buffer, I like the notion of connecting that area from a pedestrian perspective and addressing that gateway business, but boy, I think this is just way, way too much.
Let me ask a follow-up question to that. Commissioner Staunton, yourself and others, I think we're hearing the density question. Is there a, some guidance that you can give us so that we come back with something that is a little bit closer to your, you know, palatable to the commission? Is it something closer to some of the items that staff has recommended for previous approvals? Is there some leeway in there, looking at some of the allowances that we had outlined before, somewhere in the middle? We'd be very appreciative of hearing some thoughts from you as you continue your discussion here that would help us as we go forward with that.
Well, I'll tell you, I mean, I haven't heard from folks in the neighborhood about this, but if the Waters is any guide, you know, that's twenty-two units an acre, and that is buffered in way more ways than this will be. Right now, you got, you got ten units on, what, one and a third, 1.4 acres. I just, I don't see it being even as dense as the Waters, given the proximity you are to a single-family residential neighborhood, not to speak of the whole traffic. I mean, you got one way in and one way out, no way to kind of circle around the tough turn onto Brookview as well as onto Interlochen. I just, I think it's just way, way over the top, but I'm just one guy, so.
Mr. Potts?
I guess I'll add to my comments. I think it really depends on what next steps you take with this, particularly, you know, responding, of course, to everything you've heard here, but also taking a harder look or at least describing to us your thinking in a little more detail about responding to the topography, to the streetscape, to the neighborhood to the north, and to Vernon. I mean, to, I apologize if I missed this, but I didn't catch if there are actually entries to units off Vernon, or if I'm looking in at somebody's barbecue with a fence in the back of their apartment unit as I'm walking down a, you know, a green street. And then you're trying to screen that with some landscaping. And then you're trying to screen that with some landscaping. Some of those details, I think, you know, could be looked at, and those are the things I think you should bring back as you make a case for increasing density, you know, in any fashion, above what we do. I have one unrelated question for Mr. Hunt. I think, is it your practice when you develop these housing units to continue to own and maintain them, or do you sell the ones you develop? How do you? And so as you consider uses beyond rental, those are things that you'll continue to oversee?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Fisher?
Well, I think a lot of what I'm thinking has been stated already. You know, I'm, I'm fine with the use, you know, there are some good ideas here. I think you talk about the topography, in a sense, working for you. In some ways, I think it works against you. I think it works for you if the single-family residential neighborhood is on the upside, you know, so you're getting the small profile on the building. In this case, you know, you get the whole brunt of the building to the north, which is obviously a big impact. So I would encourage figuring out a way to, and it's been mentioned a few times here, somehow architecturally dealing with that scale issue. Because right now, I just, and I guess I'm curious, have you met with the neighborhood? Have you had any discussions? Because we're all sitting up here anticipating how and when that, what that's going to look like here. And I think that you're hearing a little bit about that. And when you, when you compare the scale of this to, say, the Waters, you know, it's pretty stark. I mean, this is actually a step up from that. So that's going to be, I think, a big challenge, and obviously the traffic's a challenge. You know, again, I don't have a problem with the use, if you can somehow figure out that density and, you know, scale issue. And I know you haven't gotten into totally developing the architecture, but it might be worth looking at different models here and how this site might, and it's not a big site, so again, big challenge. But the connectivity and a lot of those other things are positives. So, but I do think it would be a disservice for us to sit here and say, boy, you're that close.
Sure.
Because it doesn't feel like you're that close.
Commissioner Fisher, just to answer your question, there was probably about 15 to 20 folks here, a lot of them from that neighborhood when we had our open house, and there was a variety of feedback. I'm not going to say overwhelmingly positive, but a lot of it was positive. And there was some, because some folks brought up some concerns, mostly the concerns that you have raised regarding traffic in and out. But otherwise, we did have a lot of thoughtful discussion with the neighbors who came.
Commissioner Forrest, and then I've got a couple of comments.
I pretty much concur again with my fellow commissioners. As far as the use, I'm fine with, and, but I'm also concerned about, about the massing and the effect on the neighborhood and the impact of the traffic. Planner Teague did provide that number I had mentioned earlier. The, currently, our high-overlay district says a maximum of two and a half stories for this type of multifamily, low-density residential. And across the street, the commercial area is identified as have, is zoned, as having a height limit of three and a half sto, or four and a half stories, rather. So this is an increase from even the commercial zone across the way. And usually, we try to look at what are the transitional areas between the residential and the commercial areas, and this doesn't seem like a transition to me. It seems like it would have a big impact, kind of a jolt. The, I also was wondering if, what you, have you considered onsite amenities, common areas, recreation areas for this place? Because you've got a lot of people there who will probably want to do things and have parties and...
Yes, those have been considered. Those are usually part of these developments that we bring forth, so those will certainly be a key piece of this for folks. And, and we would love to look at this, coming up Highway 100, as was alluded to before, was 45 feet, so that's just over three stories at 14 feet a story at that corner. It obviously does get a little higher as you go towards the west. But again, at that point, still about five stories. But we will certainly look into these. By no means arguing here, just would love to get some more feedback, so thank you.
As I look at this, well, in the first place, the remark was made earlier that this kind of tucks into the hillside, but it doesn't really tuck into the hillside, it just builds up on top of the hillside. My concern is similar to what Commissioner Staunton said. This is just a big, big place next to single-family residents, and I, that bothers me that there's just no transition at all. You know, you can say, yeah, it's 60 feet and you got the wide front yard and all that, but, but you got a great big multifamily unit next to single-family, especially the house that's immediately to the east. It looks like it's right there. And, you know, the purpose of a sketch plan review, I think, is not to give false encouragement to a developer. And, you know, you spend a lot of money bringing back a proposal, and then everybody votes it down, and you say, what did I spend my money for? And I'd have to say that this just is, I think it's too big. And I realize that there are economic considerations when you build a building, you've got to make it work from an economic standpoint, and, you know, if you can't make it work economically, then you don't want to do it. And if this is all you can do, then maybe you want to look someplace else. I just, just to be perfectly frank with you, I think it's too big. So that's just my thoughts. And I'm not speaking as chairman, I'm just speaking as me, so.
I mean, to that same question, thoughts, we would love direction, obviously smaller, less dense, three stories, four stories, two stories, 20 units, 40 units, those types of things would help us at least, not to pin you down, but to ask perhaps a range that we can work within that might seem palatable. So, so we're not coming back with something that's going the whole wrong direction again.
Yeah.
Mr. Forrest?
What do you want going in 30 feet from your house? I guess this is probably, I mean, what, what would you, not just tolerate, but what would you be comfortable living with next to you? If you want a gut level, I'd say 20 units and two, two and a half stories would be about it for me, but that's my personal gut level, just looking at it for the first time. And I think we all want to be open-minded and understand, you know, as our chair said, that there are economic constraints, you have to balance it all out. But personally, thinking about, you know, what's going in next door when I'm already dealing with a neighborhood with not huge lots and right next, I'm hemmed in by Vernon and the freeway, and one entrance in and out, that's, those are all things that are kind of your butt in your head against. The traffic, where do people's visitors go? I mean, how many visitors are going to feel comfortable driving into an underground parking ramp if they don't know if it's the first time they've been there? There'll probably be, there would be a parking impacts on the street. There're just, there's just a lot of things that make me personally pretty uneasy with, with what's being presented tonight, so that's just a personal gut-level thing at this point in time.
Commissioner Schroeder?
I can't, I know you're looking for a number, and while, where others might be willing to jump in and give you a height or give you a density, I have a really hard time sitting up here and defining for you what the face of density should be. I want a really creative solution. I don't know what number attaches to that. I want one that's sensitive to the neighborhood. I don't know what number attaches to that. So we're not going to be able to give you an answer, but I know your firm, your creative group, come back with something that astounds us.
Maybe you could divide it into 50-foot lots and build some single-family houses.
Commissioner Carpenter?
I was just going to make one comment. I don't want to restate what everybody else has said, and it's not, probably not very visible from here, I'm holding up, you know, the drawing of the Grandview plan. You're up here outside the area of the, of the overall planning, and there's a whole lot of area within there that strikes me that would be a lot juicier to go after than this. I'll just throw that out. I mean, that's, you know, if you're looking for an opportunity to help move a really creative and neat idea for the Grandview area forward, maybe this is not the right site for it, but maybe there's a different one that would be much more interesting.
Other comments?
Well, there don't seem to be any more comments from the commission. I know there are residents here who are interested in this proposal, and I know my neighbor here is working with you, and I was reluctant to be too negative because I have to maintain peace within the neighborhood. But I know Ms. Bowles is working with you and with the neighbors, so you've heard the comments of the commission here. In view of the time, I'm reluctant to take any additional public comment, because I know that you've been, you've made yourself available to the neighborhood, and you will continue to make yourself available to the neighborhood. Carrie, one question in terms of process. They've come forward with a sketch plan, there's no reason why they can't come back with another sketch plan. I mean, it's not necessary that the next step that you take is the development of a formal, a formal proposal, you know. You've got some good ideas here, like Commissioner Schroeder says, we're looking, we're looking to be astounded, and he seems to have the full confidence that you have the ability to do that. So, you know, if there are no other, other comments from the commission, I want to thank you for your presentation. I hope we've given you some constructive advice and something that you can take back and noodle and work with and consider.
Absolutely. Commissioners, thank you very much. We really appreciate taking the time to give us your feedback tonight, and we will take this into consideration and bring something astounding back.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next item, modification of the redevelopment plan for the southeast Edina redevelopment project area. It's a TIF, a TIF issue. Carrie, you want to present that? And I guess when you're presenting it, what's the difference between this and the TIF issue that we just handled?
Yeah, certainly, Chair Grabel. This is different from the previous item. Jessica Cook from Ellers is again with us this evening. The council, city council is considering establishment of a new TIF district that would include Southdale and the surrounding areas, and that map was provided in your staff report. The purpose of creating this new TIF district is to facilitate some of the proposals.
Can I interrupt this at all? We've been sitting here to say something, and we can't give you the viewpoints. This is the first time I've ever come to one of these. I'd like to say what I was going to say. It's not much.
Okay, all right. I did give you the impression that I would hear, hear comments, I...
I asked you earlier if this was the time.
Right, and I said that, and you're, you're absolutely correct. So how about, how about two or three minutes, okay? All right. I apologize to the...
I think you know who I am. I'm Dave Valentine, live on Hankerson Avenue, been here for 35 years, and I love this area. I've told Kevin, I think you guys have all done an outstanding job tonight on this. I'm surprised, but I don't think the building belongs there. Well, no, I don't mean that disrespect. Well, at least I... I was thinking you wouldn't.
We're pretty, we're pretty surprised.
Yeah, well, I admire that, but I don't think the building belongs there at all. And I think some of you, Kevin has surprised me too. But I've got some points here, if I can think of them now. It's a, it's a senior place, I'm all for seniors, I don't think it's the right place. You've got a lot of senior areas, one on Vernon, and then you got the prison, you know what I mean. And there's a lot of, it seems like that's where it should go, not in a residential area. I don't think the city likes that area where they want to build. They probably do need some kind of an improvement there, but this isn't it, and I think you all realize it. And I said three minutes, and I've got a lot more to say, but I can come back, and I just hope you never consider this. I live here, I like to walk my dog, I, a simple life, that doesn't fit in. The traffic and everything in there is wrong. The message that they sent said that you can call them and they'll get back to you. Well, they don't get back to you. So I had to say it here. Thank you for a little bit of time. You guys go ahead and...
Mr. Valentine, stay, stay active in this, and I will...
I've never heard anything so absurd, is this...
Well, maybe, I just, just stay active in it, they'll, they'll listen to your concerns, and they will be in touch with you, and they want to hear it.
I don't like, I don't like being a leader or, it's just that this is so wrong that, I think you all realize it. Thanks.
And I apologize for the misunderstanding about the, about the testimony, so that's my fault that...
I'm not, I'm a senior myself, I'm not against senior places.
I'm a senior too.
And my mother was living in one of these down here too, and it's, but, I mean, if you have this walkway from where they're planning, you're going to need EMS people there that get them up the 600 yards to go to Jerry's and...
Okay. Mr. Valentine?
It's the most crazy thing I've ever heard of.
Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. They will take it under advisement as well. See, and you already elected me chair, so it's too late. Can't go, can't go back to the beginning of the meeting.
Can I just propose we have our annual meeting at the end of our meeting?
Okay, Carrie, I'm sorry. I apologize for the, for the disruption.
Sure, not a problem. Okay, so the purpose of this TIF district is to facilitate some of those improvements that are being requested to be made at Southdale. Improvements include new entrances, flooring, lighting, signage, restroom, parking deck lighting, and interior treatments to the public space. And so Southdale is asking for a loan of $5 million to, for those improvements. And so in establishing this TIF, this district, it's required of the planning commission to make a finding that those improvements are consistent with the comprehensive plan. So it's really, the purview of the planning commission is just as simple as that, are what they're proposing, those improvements consistent with the comp plan. Now, there's no change in use, so it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Jessica Cook is here from Ellers, and if you have any questions on the detail of the TIF and how that all works, she would be glad to answer.
Are there any, are there any questions of staff or Ms. Ellers?
Well, first of all, Ms. Cook knows how to clear a room, but, that's just the nature of public finance, sorry. My question on this district, so we're saying with the, it's an economic development district, it's like any other kind of TIF district, I'm assuming, nine-year window though, so if a new development gets built along the ring outside of Southdale, say across 66 or across France, that would then contribute increment into this district, or is it solely kind of the Southdale deal we're thinking about here?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, we... Thank you. Perhaps I can preface the specific answer to your question with an answer to another question I heard, which is what's the difference between this and what this planning commission recently considered? This TIF district is located within the southeast Edina redevelopment area, as was recently expanded, but there is no change to that area except for the potential inclusion of this district. So that's why that's in the title of your resolution. the title of your resolution. In terms of this particular district, it's proposed as an economic development district. You're correct in that the term would be nine years. However, under regular state law, economic development districts can only be used for specific uses such as call centers, manufacturing warehouses, et cetera. They generally cannot be used for retail. Excuse me. The exception and the reason it can be considered in this case is that there is a temporary waiver of that requirement under state law, and it's part of the jobs bill. So it's to spur construction jobs. And so what's contemplated is to create this district under that temporary authority that the city and the HRA are granted to the, and that window closes. Construction has to start by July 1. So after that window has closed, the only additional development that might be potential to receive increment would, would be under the old law, which is the manufacturing warehouse, et cetera. The property outside of Southdale proper would generate increment that would help repay the city, the interest on the city's loan. The city is also contemplating forgiving $250,000 of that loan in return for easement and operation of a transit station in the northeast corner. And so the increment would also help repay the city for that.
Questions for Ms. Cook?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Potts?
Can you tell us how the loan dollar value was arrived at? Was that requested and responded to? And similarly, the dollar value, the possible forgiveness, the quarter million?
The loan value was, originally, what was requested was a larger value and a grant. And through the negotiation team and involvement of the council, the current negotiations are at a $5 million no-interest loan to be repaid over eight years. The amount for the transit station was just an amount that was determined to be reasonable, and the feedback we have from Metropop, from the Met Council Transit folks is that that's a really good price for a transit easement.
So the benefit to the city is not directly financial, but improvements to the public realm, if you will?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Scherer?
Do we know if this is in anticipation of any new tenants, any significant change in the overall use or health of the facility?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, I forget the exact term that the owner, Simon Properties, uses, but, but Southdale has now become one of their, what shall I say, priority properties. And so I think they purchased the mall in 2006, 2007. They are now focused on improving that. So the attraction of Herberger's, and that was part of the initiation of this plan, the relocation of the food court, et cetera. So it's, it's part of this plan that they have had in the works for a couple of years.
Other questions? What, oh, Commissioner Fisher?
I would just, again, reading what we were asked to do, and so I'll kind of go back to that. And that is, is this consistent with our comprehensive plan? And I think it is. So I would make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? The motion is to approve the resolution. It's on page A1, which ends in language now therefore be resolved by the commission that the plans conform with the general plans for the development and redevelopment of the city as a whole. So that's the action. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Pott?
Let's have a question. So we're not being asked about what the TIF does. We're asking if it's consistent with the comp plan. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're on the last legs here. Correspondence and petitions, you've received the Council connection. In your packet, you received the attendance listing. The only one who's in any danger here is your chair, but that will be taken care of over the next couple of months.
Could I ask a quick question?
Yes.
On this attendance sheet, which is really great, by the way, it's kind of nice to be updated, is there somewhere on there you can put, remind us what the actual percentage requirement is, so we know if we're getting, if we're below the bar, above the bar, or heading toward the bar?
Sure, that's a good idea. I can
But, I mean, everything else about it is really fantastic.
Sure, well, I'll just write it in on the bottom.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions about that? Chair and commission member comments, uncommented out. Does any other commission member have anything they wish to say, anything about the Grand View area?
I'll just give you a quick update. We, we are still planning on returning to this commission at our next meeting on April 11. I will not be there. But either Commissioner Fisher or Commissioner Schroeder, I'm sure, will capably present the changes. We basically have taken the public comment, tried to incorporate it into the framework. We're finishing that up, and we'll bring that back to the planning commission. And then the plan is to be in front of the city council on April 17. And anyone who's interested is certainly welcome to come and hear and provide input as well. I know the city council is looking forward to seeing the work that we've done, as well as hearing from people about what they think about it.
Has Bill McCreevy agreed to have a drive-through funeral parlor?
He's, he's working. It's new creativity.
Any other commission comments? Anything from the staff?
If the planning commission is interested, you may have noticed in the Council connection that the council approved the PUD, our first one in town, the one at France and 70th. It's to be called the Phoenix Plaza. And I've got a couple of slides if you'd like to see the changes that were recommended by the planning commission
Sure.
and how it ended up. Okay, so this is the finished product. As you see, they added the windows all back in at the main entrance, and the signage became quite a bit smaller. You may recall that the sign was quite large at the previous iterations. Back look. Whoops. So I think they really did accomplish what the planning commission was looking for with your recommendations.
Good. Thank you. Anything else to come before the commission? Thank you all for your participation tonight. This was an interesting session, to say the least. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Chair?
It's been moved and second to adjourn. All say, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.